Okay. I'd like to go ahead and call the special meeting of the Board of Education of Main Township High School District 207 to order. It is now 12:16. Could you take the role, Ginny?
Collins?
Here.
Coyle?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Patrice?
Here.
Yusuf Abramson?
Here.
Owen. And I know we're eating, but if we could just take a moment and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we are in our open session. We're eating. We actually are going to ask that the camera just be turned down a little bit, so you don't have to worry about being viewed eating. But we will keep our mic open. We are now in an open meeting. We don't have any visitors yet, but I wanted to go through a couple of -- we'll just take some time. I need to mention a couple of things. First of all, our first interview was with Ray and Associates, and they had, due to unforeseen circumstances, they had to bow out. So, we found this out late yesterday. We really couldn't make an adjustment. We'd already given notice of this meeting. So, we have a little extra time now before our first interview. And we'll try and start them a little early, because usually they arrive early anyway. So, we'll try and start it early and move things. We can maybe move things along a little bit. Dean might have to leave for a little bit, so I'm trying to make sure that he gets to ask questions. The way this is going to work is you all have before you a series of questions that have -- one, two, three, four, seven questions on it. And I'm going to go ahead and assign those out, just so that we know who's asking the questions. I'll do that in one minute. The other thing that you have before you is a rubric, which I'm looking for right now. That's the chart right here. This rubric is meant to help us kind of organize our, you know, like our own feedback that we want to share and help us to reach consensus today. It's just meant as a tool. If you don't want to use it, you don't have to, but it might be a nice tool. And it's basically just a way for you to keep track of your kind of evaluation as we're going through the interviews. They're arranged in the order that we'll actually be meeting the candidates. So, those are the two things that we have here. Everyone should have received from Ginny the packets of information, which I thought were pretty complete. There was a lot of information in there. So, George and I sat down. We went through some questions. We had a bunch of questions, but we realized a lot of what we're asking is already in the materials. So, we kind of, you know, we could never ask all the questions we got on our list in a 30-minute interview. So, we kind of picked what we considered to be like the important topics under each category. And so, that's what we'll go ahead and I'll go ahead and let you know who's going to be asking what. That doesn't mean you can't ask more questions. I just want you to know. I was thinking, we'd like every search firm to get the same questions, so let's try and work through the questions one time, and then if you want to come back and ask a follow-up, we can do that. And we're also leaving at the end some closing comments to give them an opportunity, because I think all of these firms are a little bit used to making a presentation. And, you know, George and I talked about that, and we felt that it's -- we have all that information. We have a lot of information that was in some of their presentations, and we really wanted to get to know the individuals a little bit better. So, that's why we're doing it with this format. But I want anyone here who's got a question on any, if it's on expenses, please feel free. We'll try and keep some time at the end for that purpose. So, that's it. Any questions on that? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and assign these questions. I'm going to start with the experience and expertise. I'll do a little introduction, and then I'll ask that. Terry, I was hoping you could ask about the search process. Dean, candidate assessment. And if you're uncomfortable, you don't want to ask. I don't see anything tricky here, but, you know, you can always change. Gin, I'm giving you two, which is the background assessment and confidentiality. I kind of feel like those are related, so if you could ask those. It's category four and category five. Ed, community engagement. And then Sheila, I'm hoping you could do closing, you know, kind of ask them to have closing comments. And then, you know, after your question, you could throw it out to the group and see if there's anything else that they want to ask. And then, you know, if you want to add some potential general questions at the bottom, that's kind of what I did when I was reading through. I had some questions, so I threw them down here for my own benefit. So, if they don't answer during that period, then, you know, I could ask it here. All right? Owen, the only other thing you have in front of you is School Exec Connect provided a little bit more information, and we gave that to you, because their packet was a little bit thinner than some of the others. I think they were planning to make it more of a presentation at the meeting, so I took that, and I've given it to you. You might want to look through it. It's pretty helpful.
Carla, the rule about the lowest bid does not pertain to this process, right?
I do not think it does. I do not think it does. Yeah, I don't think it does. I mean, I can confirm that.
I would imagine it does, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
And the amount wise, it doesn't really make any differences per se. There's no huge gap between.
Yeah, yeah. A lot of those expenses seem to be, you know, I mean, we might have questions about some of the add-ons, things like that, but -- and that's a perfectly legitimate question, you know, if you're concerned about that, so.
Well, you know, if you have to check with Mary at that time.
No, I don't think so. I haven't heard anything to that. I mean, of course, I'll confirm that, but there were a couple in here that mentioned they would match any fee, so, you know, if it comes to that, we can pursue that.
I'm glad.
So, that's it. So, feel free to eat, and, you know, if anybody has any other questions or...
Just remember it's recording, so we're still in...
Right. And this will be recording through all our deliberations.
Video, two points.
There will be a video as well. But right now, it's -- he's got it turned off for while we're eating.
Still going, but just you are eating alone, right?
[laughing].
The sound is still there, just not the video.
Sound is still there, right. We may go into closed session briefly if there's an issue, but we -- it is not proper to be deliberating other than with respect to specific individuals during closed session. So, when we come back out of closed session, that's when we will, you know, talk through and try to reach consensus on one of the firms. Also, we do want to try to do that today, because the follow-up would be, we reach consensus, we'll reach out to that firm and ask them to provide their engagement contract so that our attorneys could review it, and we can go ahead and approve it at the meeting on Monday, which Ginny has already put on the agenda.
And most of those timelines that people were giving to depended on us making a decision relatively quickly.
Kind of moving... Right, right. And it'd be best to do it without having to call a special meeting, so -- and I think it's doable. I think we should be able to, you know, I've already talked to our attorney, and he said if you just get that to me sometime tomorrow, even Friday, he should be able to turn it around and be ready for Monday. So, that would be the goal, kind of get this all started early in August is the goal.
Sorry.
It's all right.
Thanks for the invite, too.
Yeah, so the first ones are coming, supposed to come at 1:15, and they know to steer them this way. Where, if they're waiting out there, is there a place for them to sit?
Oh, but they can sit right away.
There are chairs and things out there.
We also can have them wait in the conference room.
That might be nice, only because this door's going to remain open, correct?
Right.
Will it be open or just available to enter?
We could do it either way.
It's open. It's an open meeting, so I don't mind leaving it open. Yeah? Good, good, good.
Okay.
Where's this from? The cell phone.
Ready? Ready?
When the first firm arrives, they're going to text me from the security, and I'll go up and get them and bring them in if we're ready for them. When the other firms come in, they're going to have, there's a little holding area where if they're not, then we'll bring them in, so they're not crisscrossed.
Okay. You'll go, are you planning to go? Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, I can do that.
So, you...
No, I don't need to.
Oh, okay.
So, this is, are you able to attend?
Okay.
Right?
You should be up.
And this is on the screen, so you can try to turn it over a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you.
We can give them water, water, so.
Yeah, it's similar.
But we actually could go right before this tour, because we like it.
The times you're supposed to be, just so I have this. Oh, here it is. Two. I'm trying to time it, so he has to take a break. You have to take a break at 3:00.
I think I'm okay.
Oh, you do? Okay, okay.
It naturally happens, so.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't know, if you have to do it, of course, go ahead.
Thank you.
I remember having a school board meeting over there. Ginny, remember that?
Oh, yeah.
On that side.
Yeah, that was not a... Yeah, a full house. Very full house.
I mean, if they're here, I'm thinking we started. They might be ready, I'm thinking we start at 12:45.
Yeah.
Brett, did you mention that they might be starting early?
Yes.
Okay.
As soon as, whenever the first one shows up, he's going to text me, and I'm going to go get them. If you guys are ready, we can bring them in.
Are they here?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, no, as soon as they're here, he's going to text me.
That would be great.
We're not around until 12:00.
No, I'm sorry. If I wasn't clear, yeah, no. What I told him was when that first, when the first firm comes through, he's going to text me, and I'll go get them and bring them in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm so sorry.
No, that's all right.
No, they're not here yet.
Ed, did you see the big TV screen? Screen? The black screen.
Right there?
Yes. That is, yeah, they were watching, one day when I was here, they were watching soccer out there. Big crowd around there.
That's a TV?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
I don't know if you call it a TV or projector or what, I don't know.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
This is the first time I've seen it without students.
Yeah.
Completely finished without students.
Yeah.
Because my memory of the library was sort of a parrot's day in space. Then I told the boys, I said, I can, I can, yeah, we're going to use the, the microphones. And I would get nauseous as it looked.
Really?
But, yeah.
Do they even know what that word was?
No.
Probably not.
I don't think so.
It's like swimming, VHS.
And we went to a computer lab to do our tests.
Yeah, because you had to go to a special place to get to a computer.
Right. Although we had, so, my mom taught it at conception in Chicago, and every summer the teachers got to take their computer home, so that they, I guess they thought like if you let it sit like a car, it would work.
Oh, my gosh.
So, we would go to the library. We would get magazines with code. So, if you had, we sat there like for an entire day, checking the schools, so that we could play a game tomorrow.
Really?
Yeah. And if you got one line of code wrong, you didn't pull through and search for mistakes.
Yeah?
And I would tell them that, because like...
Yeah.
Everything is so instant nowadays.
Oh, yeah. Ginny, here's this. I don't want to take it away from you, I just want to make sure.
I've got a bunch over there.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I just, oh, I thought I ruined the pen. That little tip, that little thing out there.
Yeah, I know.
One of the packets had a bunch of brothers.
Yeah. But no, we did not. I thought, what, one of the things that we could do is, you know...
Yeah.
Should have used the sticks. I said I should have used the sticks.
Hmm.
So, we're next to find the decision after, or go...
We'll reach consensus today, hopefully, and then we'll vote on it. Yeah, because we'd have to have the, their agreement or... We also didn't advertise that we're going today.
Is the order that these are listed on the report, the order that we're in?
Yes, left to right. And also Ginny did a sheet for each one of them, how the questions were...
Right.
...you know. That's what I took. And then... I hated the saliva. I had your tea last time. I don't, I don't like spicy food, but I thought it was good. You could just say mild. You could just say mild.
Yeah.
But I did try it with my friends, she, and I felt, it was like, started on fire. I'm just, my palate is just very good, but I liked it.
It's good.
Yeah, they didn't, they don't, they don't have really, like, they don't have drinks and stuff. Right?
They will.
Oh, they will?
With their management, they will.
Oh, okay.
They didn't, they didn't have a BYO.
But you can, yeah, BYO, and they didn't even have two cups of coffee. So, they must have just cheated.
I agree with that most point.
Okay, well, because I like to sleep. That's the point.
Perfect.
I love the ritual of coffee, but after, after like 2:00, I cannot drink caffeine.
I stop at 10:30.
In the morning?
I may have an act of coffee.
I just have a green.
I drink as late as 9:00 PM.
Do you? That's when I kind of start, I have it.
I drink as late as 9:00 PM.
You do? You know, it's a genetic thing.
It affects me.
It's genetic. They actually can test that.
What's that?
Tolerance to caffeine.
My brother's weird. I even drink a whole cup of coffee and go right, just like, no problem.
I think it affects me, even if I have like, sometimes I'm like, I'm not drinking coffee every day, maybe like two times a week.
It's like that house, you know, you're still freezing, but your body's done. It's so weird.
It's still captured and, 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 energy your body's giving you, like, like that.
Think about everything. Neither do I. I am, yeah. So, I'm all done. I'm actually getting my degree converted on Sunday.
Oh, that's great. Exciting. Another doctor in the house.
We have to call you that now?
Yes, we do.
Doctor.
Yeah. Dottore. We'll do it in Italian, dottore.
What was that?
Dottore. In Italian would be dottore, doctor. Dottore Collins.
Yes, congratulations, Sheila.
Thank you. It's so weird to be done, but very, very happy.
What to do with all your time, right?
I can fill it up.
Also, I just want to thank Ginny for all the legwork, getting all this done, and George putting a lot of time into the questions and stuff.
Thank you.
I mean, they're going to have more work to do because of this search, just generally, so you've got to keep that in mind.
Don't care if that...
Yeah, definitely. No one's here yet, so. I do hope we find Park. I had to park in the visitor parking, not along the...
Oh, on the side?
A wing.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay.
Are there restrooms right in here?
It's all the way around.
Or you have to go around the corner?
It's all the way around.
It's down at the very end, and then around the corner.
I have to go, just...
Okay.
Carla, is everybody finished eating?
Pardon me?
If everybody's finished eating, I'll...
I think Gin is still eating.
Gin's still eating? Okay, great.
Let's wait just a couple minutes. He just stepped out, but he's still... What do you do with the extra food? Go back to the building?
I can probably just leave it to there somewhere.
Here, okay.
I can leave the cookies and the chips in the...
Okay.
Since we're here for a while.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah. No, I'm just saying generally, it's a good amount.
I could get, I mean, I could bring them to sell, but I don't know, should I?
Sure.
Do you think everybody's still eating now?
Well, is everyone pretty much not eating for the most part? Okay. Do you want to do that, Ginny? Go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be nice for them.
But I'll leave, like I said, I'll leave the chips and cookies.
I can, I can help.
Oh, no, I've got a little cart here, but they can't...
Oh.
They're staying right here, George.
I was about to mention something.
Yeah, deserves a check.
That salad is...
Although the cookies are the best.
Yeah, really, the chicken's really good.
Yeah, they do a good one.
They do a really nice...
It's kind of southwest.
Oh, yes, they do. Delicious. Oh, barbecue.
Barbecue ranch or something.
Unless it's supposed to...
Right here.
Hi, Mike Russler. Would you like a sandwich or salad?
Please have something to eat, Mike. We're about to bring it in. Yeah, come on. He was not going to turn that away.
Hi.
It is, it's not facing you, but the microphone's up. We're in open session.
Well...
Oh, God, it sounds really healthy.
Carla, the first firm has arrived.
Well, they have, okay, let's wait just about...
So, I'll wait till Gin gets back.
Exactly.
And you let me know, and then I'll go out and get them.
Okay.
Oh, they're here again.
I always like that.
I can always find where they are.
I think I'm a lot right now. I don't believe it.
There'll be a bad mascot, the vultures, gold vultures, you know.
I used to do that, when I, they would do like lunches, and like, I would always know what, and like, they'd be in their meeting room, they'd see me.
Oh, yeah, right.
And one time I got them before, I wasn't working with the group anymore, and I saw it was, they hadn't eaten lunch yet, and I still went over, just a mess of them, and I still took one.
It's like being a college student forever. Remember, you'd always have free food. Gosh, we had to go for that.
When it was usually, I was trapped outside, so I was going to buy lunch anyway.
Yeah.
A cookie was tasty.
I think I took your house. Did you detect it?
Yeah. I mean, I just kind of bit it off, like...
Oh, okay. It didn't appear that way, which is...
No, I tongged it off.
Gin, the first group is here, so we're going to let you finish.
I'm going to...
Oh, okay. Okay, okay, okay. So, if it's okay, we'll go ahead and turn our camera back and up, and we'll wait for Ginny to come back, and then we'll, we'll bring them in. Okay.
Can you do it in here?
I don't know much more than that yet. I'm just trying to put together...
Okay.
Are you sticking around, Mike?
Being a nug.
How are you?
I'm well. How are you doing?
Very good.
Good. See ya.
Nice to see you too. I'm looking at my...
Yeah, I did. It was London, you said it was.
Oh, fun.
It was, it was just like...
Oh.
Yeah, we had a section there, and we were, for the expense. It was a city that was, like, basically, so, it was very, very...
Oh, wow.
Do they perform in London?
Just by chance.
We're taking...
Yeah. I collect all those military, that, that, and I know that have...
Do you need to...
Put it in the air.
No.
Because if it's Bluetooth, your Bluetooth is still connected to your phone, if you put your...
I can turn my Bluetooth on my phone.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so that works.
That boss for you.
Because I don't want to get...
I hated the saliva. Had you taken a restaurant?
What was it?
I don't, I don't like spicy food. I thought it was good. You could just say mild, you could just say mild.
Yeah.
But I did try it with my friends. She, he, and I felt, it was starting to fire. I'm just, my palate is just very good. But I liked it.
It's good.
Yeah, they didn't, they don't, they don't have really, like, they don't have drinks and stuff.
Right.
They will.
Oh, they will?
In return for management, they will.
Oh, okay.
They didn't, they didn't have a BYO.
But you can, yeah, BYO, um, they didn't even have two cups of coffee. So they must have cheated.
I agree with that most point.
Okay, well, because I like to sleep, that's the point.
Perfect.
I love the ritual of coffee, but, but after, after like two o'clock, I cannot drink caffeine.
I stop at ten thirty.
In the morning?
I might have an act of coffee.
I just have a drink. Do you, that's when I kind of start, I have.
They drink as late as nine P M.
You do? You know, it's a genetic thing.
It affects me.
It, it's genetic, they actually can test that.
What's that?
Uh, tolerance to caffeine.
My brother's weird, I even drink a whole cup of coffee and go right, just like, no problem.
I think it affects me even if I have like a, something like a caffeine, you know, maybe like two times.
It's like that house, it's like, I'm still freezing, but, but your body's done. It's so weird.
You feel captured in a kind of, or, or, energy, your body's getting in your head, like, like that.
Think about everything. No, neither do I. I am, yeah, so I'm all done, I'm actually getting my degree third on Sunday.
Oh, that's great, exciting. Another doctor in the house.
We have to call you that now?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, doctor.
Yeah. Dotore, we'll do it, dotore, in Italian, dotore.
What was that?
Dotore, in Italian would be dotore, doctor, dotore Collins.
Yes, congratulations, Sheila.
Thank you.
It's so weird to be done, but, very, very happy. What to do with all your time, right? I can fill it up.
Also, I just want to thank Ginny for all the legwork, getting all this done, and George putting a lot of time into the questions and stuff.
Thank you.
I mean, they're gonna have more work to do because of this surge, just generally, so, gotta keep that in mind.
Don't care if that, uh, what?
Yeah, definitely. No one's here yet, so. I do hope they find a park. I had to park in the visitor parking, not along the.
Oh, on the side?
A wing.
Are there bathrooms right in here? Or you have to go down the corner?
It's down at the very end and then around the corner.
Carla, has everybody finished eating?
Pardon me?
If everybody's finished eating, I'll.
I think Gin is still eating.
Gin's still eating? Okay, great.
Let's wait just a couple minutes. He just stepped out.
What do you do with the extra food? Going back to the building?
I can probably just leave it to there somewhere, like here. Okay. I can leave the cookies, the chips, and the cookies since we're only here for a while.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah. No, I'm just saying generally, it's a good amount.
I could get, I mean, I could bring them to sell, uh, I don't know, should I?
Sure.
Do you think everybody's still eating now?
Well, is everyone pretty much not eating for the most part? Okay, do you want to do that, Ginny? Go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be nice for them. Like I said, I'll leave the chips and the cookies.
I can, I can help.
Oh, no, I've got a little cart here, I think. They're staying right here, George.
Douglas. I was about to mention somewhere.
Yeah, deserves a check.
That salad is.
Although the cookies are the best.
Yeah, really, the chicken's really good.
They do, they, yeah, they do a good line.
They do a really nice.
It's in the southwest.
Oh, yes, they do. Delicious.
Oh, barbecue. Barbecue ranch.
Hi, Mike Russell, would you like a sandwich or salad?
Please have something to eat, Mike, we're about to bring it in. Yeah, come on. He was not gonna turn that away.
Hi!
It is, uh, it's not facing you, but the microphone's up, we're in open session. Oh, God, it sounds really healthy.
Carla, the first firm has arrived.
Well, they have, okay, let's wait just about.
So, I'll wait till Gin gets back.
Exactly.
And you let me know, and then I'll go out and get them.
Okay.
Oh, they're here again.
There'll be a bad mascot, the vultures, gold vultures, you know.
They would do like lunches and like, I would always know.
Oh, yeah.
They'd be in their meeting room, they'd see me. One, and one time I got a before, I wasn't working with the group anymore, and I saw it was, they hadn't eaten lunch yet, and I still went over, just about, so I started, I still took one.
It's like being a college student forever. Remember, you'd always have free food, gosh, we had to go for that.
When it was usually, I was trapped outside Austin, so I was gonna buy lunch anyway. The cookie was tasty.
I think I took your house, did you detect it?
Yeah. I didn't mind, I just kind of bit it off, like.
It didn't appear that way, which is.
I tongged it off.
Gin, the first group is here, so, we're gonna let you finish.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna sit beside her.
Okay, okay, okay. So if it's okay, we'll go ahead and turn our camera back and up, and, um, we'll wait for Ginny to come back, and then we'll, we'll, uh, we'll bring them in. Okay.
Can you do it from here?
Don't know much more than that yet, I'm just trying to put together.
Okay.
Are you sticking around, Mike?
Being a nug.
How are you?
I'm well, how are you doing?
Very good.
Good, see ya.
Nice to see you too.
Yeah, I did. It was, uh, London, you said it was.
Oh, fun!
Yeah, we had a stand-up music group there, and all the, all the stents. It was a city that, without, basically, we decided, so, proof, for, uh, to, uh, uh, for.
Oh, wow! Do they perform in London? Where they.
I collect art over the military, that, 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 so, and I know that that have.
Cause if it's air, your Bluetooth is still connected to your phone, if you put your.
I can turn my Bluetooth on my phone.
Yeah, yeah, that works too.
Cause I don't, I don't want to get notifications. Yeah, I don't, I just, I had to reactivate this and reset it, and so now it's giving me notifications. I just like when it has my stand up.
Read. No, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You've been sitting forever.
Can you check the camera, does it, is it getting all of us here?
You have a picture?
Yeah.
Oh, my God! Oh, my God!
Okay.
Oh, oh, how cool is that?
Yep, I should know, should wait for you to get back in.
Okay. They, Iris is wondering if I was gonna come.
You did rush out. All right.
Here?
Is that okay? Yes. I just want to make sure, before I go get the firm.
I was just gonna say, it's probably two on site, it can coordinate, that'd be great, okay. Good, good.
Those two teams are still the first teams.
Yes, he told me, I was waiting for you. That looks like that's all they're gonna have. Is it a man and a woman?
Yes.
Okay, it's probably good. The extra.
Right.
It must be really warm there, it is not.
Yeah, I brought a sweater, I thought I might get cold.
No, I do too, you know what it was, I was, my, I had adjusted to the temperature, and then I went in the main office, it's warm, and then came back here, it's a good thing we probably weren't there, because it was pretty warm in that conference room.
Just wait for Dean and then.
Okay.
It's not like I'm uncomfortable, but I'm comfortable.
I'm getting, yeah, just a difference in temperature from where I was.
Oh, thank you.
I think I'll be okay, but, I'll adjust back, I already have some.
Ginny, they don't serve or sell any coffees from here, do you?
Um, I mean, I could, maybe in between, after this first one, I can check and see in the office.
A coffee or something?
Yeah.
I'll ask in the office when I go get the firm.
Okay.
See if they have it.
Thank you, there is no one in there right now but Iris.
Well, somehow the firm is in there, so.
Yeah, they're, they're just sitting there waiting, if the, the gentleman from the firm let me in.
You two DoorDash with, uh, like a donuts.
He did.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead.
I know, I know.
No, no, it's no problem, no, no, you're fine.
I'll go get them?
Yes. Two. Oh, yeah. And it's kids that are doing, who else are parents? And the time. No. Just Jen.
Okay, okay.
No, I do not want to do that. It's a, it's a meeting that is. Yeah, right, yeah. I mean, this is a meeting that's open, so, if anybody wants to watch, I think you can, so, I don't think you need to be writing down.
Okay.
Definitely not. I'd have to take medicine to get over that. This is my dad's. That's my dad. Yeah.
Is this the person who?
No, I've had it, no, Ginny has it at her desk, she has it.
And she brings it?
Yeah, she brings it. We have another one too, though, but, I'll have you this, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, they're doing the.
They're doing the motivation. Did you say that you would ask for them to maybe move a few cars or something?
They, I asked her, so, she was having, she was putting an announcement out, people needed to move their cars by eleven, but I'm not sure.
Oh, cause. I know, I do worry a little bit, because if you are.
The overlap.
The over, like, where do you go, you don't even know, I guess, I guess you could just go to the, you know, lot past the, uh, the auditorium, you could just park there, but it's a little bit of a walk, then.
Yeah.
Guys, right up there?
Wonderful. Welcome, welcome.
Well, thank you.
Please have a seat.
Thanks, but I appreciate you.
You're welcome.
How are you?
Hi, guys, how are you?
Very good, nice, nice to see you.
It's good to see you.
I'm assuming we have Kevin O'Mara and Donna.
I'm Kevin O'Mara.
And Donna.
I go by Donna.
Donna Lee, right.
You call me Kevin if you want.
We've known each other for a long time.
Would you like any water? We've got water here, do you want the bottle?
No, we are, we are just fine.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Okay.
Thank you for the morning. Good, good, good.
Please have a seat, and I'll, I'll just give you a little bit of an idea of what the process is, um, and then, uh, we'll go from there. First of all, I want to thank you, um, on behalf of the whole board, for your materials that you sent in, uh, we actually have the original proposal that came in, and then, I believe this was meant to be sort of a, a deck that would have been shown, but we printed that. For everyone, cause it seemed to have a good amount.
Use it or use, lose it, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, well, it seemed to have additional information, so, you know, we, we did distribute that out. Because we had a good amount of information, we really didn't want presentations, we wanted to take this opportunity to actually get to know you a little bit, and ask you some questions that we think are important. We'll do that, each, each of our board members will ask a question, and, um, at the end of that, you'll have an opportunity, we'll also have an opportunity to ask some follow-up if we have them, and you'll also have some time if you want to mention anything that you think's important for us to know, uh, that we didn't, that you didn't touch on during our questions. Okay, does that make sense?
Perfect, absolutely.
Okay. So, um, could you just start by, if you don't mind, just, please, quickly, briefly, introduce yourself and just very little bit about your firm that you'd like to tell us?
I will start, um, so my name's Donna Simpson, and I am currently superintendent in South Cook County. Um, I actually started, this is my second superintendent, see, I was a high school superintendent, very familiar with Maine, uh, South New, we actually played you all periodically in sports. And I'm assuming you did well. It's a hard competition. Um, I have been in education now since nineteen eighty-nine, this is my thirty-fourth year roughly, um, and I have been everything from a high school math teacher, to a president chair, to, uh, I did international consulting for six years, so I spent time working with the Department of Defense, American Community Schools abroad, so I tried to gain some global influence and come back. I worked in urban settings, in Chicago, suburban settings, um, all over, and I also am the vice president of the State Board of Education for the Illinois State Board, and this is my second term, so I'm in my fifth year right now on the state court, so we can serve up to two terms, I'm actually the first city superintendent in that role, so it's been, um, an experience to be able to be at the table representing all the superintendents across the state as we make decisions. Um, I have, um, had a lot of experience in terms of collaborative teaching, um, I do workshops on what race got to do with it, so cultural responsiveness is in my background very much so, I do workshops all over for school districts, for conferences, um, so that's been a big piece of who I am and what I do to support school districts in particular. More importantly of all of that, I'm the mother of two children, I have a soon-to-be sophomore at Michigan State, and a rising senior at Holy Claus, well, a white, I forgot about that part. And so, I actually, um, when I first became a superintendent, which, um, this is now my fourth year, Kevin was my mentor right out the gate, so I was a baby superintendent, took the underswing, and we've been working together ever since. So that's a quick, short person.
Okay, thank you.
And, um, I'll be quick, I was in public education for thirty-two years, I was a high school math teacher at Light, I'm not too far away from there, I was their dearest student for seven years, and I moved to Bridgewater High School, even closer, I was their principal for seven years as well, and in my last nine years, I was superintendent at Harville Community High School in Southwest, I worked there, Harville, the six, there. I always worked in high schools, always liked high schools, um, always liked the end of high school kids. I retired in twenty seventeen and started as an associate professor at Concord University, and have been there ever since. I worked in their E D D, Ph D program, helping, uh, people get their doctorates, but also become superintendent and more principal license to the state law line. Right now, I sit on forty-three dissertation committees, and it's a lot of reading and editing and things like that, um, but it's, it's worthwhile, because we need good young leaders in our, in our capacity here to continue our education. I've been owner of school executive now for five years, I've worked for about ten years, I've done fifty-five searches throughout the United States, mostly here in the Midwest, and, um, I also am a spouse, I have a wife and three children, and, um, and we're teenagers now, so I don't know what's next, but we're having fun and, and looking forward to whatever next up in our lives, and glad to have this conversation.
Thank you very much, thank you, gives us a little background on you. The first question that I want to, um, have you address with us is, you know, to let us know if you have specific expertise in recruiting superintendents for a, a district like ours, um, in the area, it's, it's not as important, but the demographics, we have three pretty different schools that, you know, uh, are under our umbrella, um, and so, we have quite a bit of diversity, and, and, uh, two of them, and this one here in Main South, not as much, can you address that a little bit?
So, if I, if you don't mind, tell you about.
Yeah.
Two oh seven is very unique, um, but I have worked in suburban Cook County my entire career, so I know this area very, very well. Forty percent, over forty percent of our consultants here, we have sixty-seven consultants that work for the firm, are acting superintendents, mostly here in the Midwest. So we will get the word out about this district. As far as demographics are concerned, um, two oh seven is unique, but last year, around this time, I finished a search in Rockwood, Missouri, which is similar, I think, as far as demographics, it's, it's a bigger district, it's a unit district, um, but they have four diff, high schools, four different styles and communities, and four different layers of demographics. I recruited a gentleman named Dr. Curtis Kane, a week after he signed his contract, he was the national superintendent of the year, so, we're good at matching demographics and community needs to what the performance superintendent, recruiting a person, and putting in a place here. So, I know the high school settings, I know your demographics, I've worked in this area for over twenty years, um, so I feel like we, we have a good sense of what that is. We were just hired last week to do Hinsdale Township eighty-six school, uh, high school district eighty-six, and their south high school is much different from Hinsdale Central, and we had the same kind of conversation, um, and we're starting to work on those demographic and, and bring the community into those conversations right now.
And I would just add that we, um, also have partnerships with different alliances that we can reach out to, looking at just demographics, um, so like the National Alliance of Physical Educators, um, our association of Latino, Latina associations, so we have, uh, technicals and networks all over the country, and in particular in this area, and like, um, Kevin, even though I did international work for a while, during my career spent in South Cook, and, and just my position with the state board has given me the opportunity to really be in West Cook, in North Cook, and do some other legwork outside of South as well.
And just so you know, I was president and executive director of the Golden High School District Organization, I know Ken's a member there, I brought him in, um, back in the day, so I have a lot of contacts and, and relationships with acting superintendents for high school.
Very helpful. Okay, we're gonna move on to our second question, Terry?
Okay, um, so, how do you assess and vet candidates to determine their suitability, suitability for our diverse organization, as you mentioned?
So, the first step is to find out what you want to have as far as personality, experience, and character traits for your superintendent candidates. We do that by having, uh, recommended focus groups with stakeholders within your district, um, ten to twelve focus groups, community members, teachers, admin, board members, um, chambers of commerce, uh, union heads and so forth, uh, parents. We also design a psychometrically based customized survey to give to your community that runs, um, throughout about a week or so, depending on when it goes out, and we also do open forums, so anybody who wants to give us their opinion, are welcome to come to, get two or three definitions within your district, have their voices heard. We take all that information and create a, what's called a candidate profile. Well, that's the list of things that we're looking for, and I say you, I mean, your entire community are looking for your next candidate, what are the experiences this person would need to be successful, what are their personality traits, what are their, what are their, uh, what, what kinds of visions do they have for what they should be one year, three years, five years down the road? That candidate profile is the lens by which we keep that candidate.
And I will just add to that, um, we, the search that I just recently did at Batavia, that was vital, because there were, there was a lot of different, um, concerns in terms of cultural responsiveness of the district, and so, we had, and we had a parent group, we had, um, the union was there, the board members participated, we had administrators, um, and then with the open forums, we, we got a lot of different information, and so when we put together that profile, it was very much what the board response was to what the community said this was what we need.
That's a great lens, and that's how we recruit, that's how we vet, that's how we check references, and that's, that's the window we look through to see if this person, if these people are good fits for being two oh seven.
We're, we're not looking at, well, we've already got ten, fifteen people, we're looking at what does Main two oh seven need, and then that's the lens that we go and find the people to even bring in, et cetera.
I've had some really strong candidates already call me, Kevin, are you gonna do the two oh seven search? Let us know when it's open. There's already excitement. It's a great place to work, we, we looked at your, at your profile, we looked at your, our work card, we looked at the public debt that's out there, you've got some good things going there, that doesn't mean you don't have your challenges, you do, uh, but you're gonna find the right person.
I mean, you, you just went a blue ribbon right in front of the pandemic, and then you went through the pandemic with fine colors, right? You, I mean, it is, it bodes very well for the community.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, so I think building on that a little bit, I appreciate that, yeah, I think we're, we're, we do have good momentum, I think generally, I think when we think about some of the things that you're, getting into assessing, um, you know, leadership abilities and really compatibility with the culture here as well, I think, I feel like you maybe touched a little bit on that, in terms of like how you gather that input, but then in terms of really assessing that against what and how you, how people are.
Well, that entire, um, that, that entire process that we talked about, one of the key points is making sure that we are spending time with stakeholders who can give us some of that insight, and sometimes it's even hearing from, uh, individuals who tell us about the, the layers and the dynamics within the office, and the dynamics between this building's administration and this building's administration, or maybe the union president is that this building, Main South, and this is how that works. is how that works, when you look at it from the other lens. So that, all of that gets incorporated into it because it becomes imperative that we understand those layers and the dynamics, because even as board member, you understand, you're looking at it from a governance level, so we're also trying to get to some of those management operation levels to help then make sure that the person's being screened, connected to that.
And is your tool kind of, is it a, you mentioned psychometric, are you getting at that in a systematic way, or is it an assessment you do, taking the data that you're getting from the people? Like, how does that?
It's a combination. Because the tool itself gives us data, and then that's why we have those focus groups, because those focus groups give us a chance to get to some of those underlying pieces that you don't know. So if you do the tool, you have the option, you can put in some additional information, you can answer questions, but then when we sit around a table and we have the opportunity to actually work with a focus group and ask different kinds of questions to different stakeholder groups, it helps us to get to that dynamic. And it's very interesting because we learn a lot in those focus groups that help us then know how to assist the board, even as you're reacting to kinds of questions, because you're looking for particular answers from people.
Once we deliver the profile to Board of Education, we would do that in an open meeting, you'll get a package of fifty to sixty pieces of data, charts, and graphs to demonstrate the psychometric balance and the conversations. As she has said, it's a balance of both those, but it'd be heavily data-driven as far as what the profile looks like.
Thank you. Jim?
I see your profile here as very impressive and outstanding, record ninety-seven percent of secret checks. When conducting this kind of reference checks, how would you guys ensure a comprehensive like background assessments?
There's a couple of things we would recommend, and these are conversations we would have if hired at a planning meeting with the Board of Education. We don't bring anyone forward in the semifinalist round, and it's typically five to seven candidates that the board would, if we haven't fully vetted and reference-checked that, we call people that they don't know that we're calling. So we want to make sure that when you Google our firm's name, there's nothing added in any newspaper or any news outlet, as you may have experienced with some other firms. We do a really good job at checking references and vetting candidates. As we move forward in the process, we would also recommend, and we'll talk about this during the planning meeting, to do an in-depth criminal tort, pedophile degree status and licensure status and social media status of the final candidate, so that no page is left unturned. And that costs $800, we'll be upfront with that, that's what the company charges us, we're not making money off that. But you can be sure that the finalist that you get is the person that we described that you're going to get.
I have another question related to, what measures do you take to protect the identities of candidates who wish to remain like anonymous until a later stage of the search?
Well, I will just say, one of the things that is crucial as we go through this process is that all the candidates understand the confidentiality of the process and respect that confidentiality, because in some cases, their district may not know that they're actually looking, and so that then becomes an issue. So we make it very clear, and I will say, in my work with the firm, we've had issues where it's gotten out unless there was a candidate who, which if they violate their own confidentiality, that tells you a story right there. So, and you, and board members, we also look through the same thing in terms of the confidentiality we moved for, because it is, it is a confidential search. And so you want to know that when you get to the very end of the process, that the person that you have selected is exactly who you want to be at your table. And so that means that it needs to maintain that, that underpinning of, we've done all of our legwork and tendencies. I will say, there does come a point when you may have, like, let's, let's say you want stakeholders to be part of the interview process. We go through that with them too, in terms of confidentiality. If you're at the table, you can't go out and tell everybody, who you are.
We make them sign a confidentiality agreement. With the board's permission, that if violated, it is a legal document. She made some very, very good points. We've never had that happen to us, confidentiality approached by someone in the community or by the firm. The candidates may say to their board in an open meeting, hey, I'm applying to District 207. Well, that's their decision.
That's their decision.
Okay. Ed?
I think to a certain degree, some of this question may have been answered previously, but what strategies do you employ to gather input from our stakeholders, whether they be board members, staff, community members, just in terms of their expectations and priorities for the superintendent?
We've designed some key, open-ended questions that we would have with those stakeholder groups, and those stakeholder groups are defined by the Board of Education. We'll come in at that planning meeting and we'll say, here are some recommended stakeholder groups we'd like to meet with. Do you want to cross that video off, or do you want to add some people to that list? We'll do whatever you ask us to do. It doesn't change our fee or our structure or anything like that. And those questions that we ask, which are very open-ended, are then deciphered into creating the profile together with the open forums that we mentioned and the survey responses that we mentioned that are psychometrically-based. We take those three pieces of informational data, and that's what creates the profile.
And I will add, when the survey is posted, we work with the board in terms of how long it should be posted, because there is kind of a sweet spot in terms of a window, so you don't want to open too long, and you don't want to open too short of a time. So we work with the board on what that looks like in order, because you know your community. So if we say we're going to open it on Monday, and you send something out, your communications director sends something out saying it's going to open on Monday, and it will be open for seven days, so that way that's communicated to your entire stakeholder group.
And as far as the forums, you mentioned providing maybe like three opportunities or whatever the amount, but are those strictly in-person, or do you offer like a video option as well for people who can't necessarily make it to a particular venue?
So we have done the virtual version as well. As we have pressed beyond COVID and its effect on attendance, kinds of issues like open forums, we'll do what the board wants us to do. But if we have 200 people in an auditorium and we're getting questions and responses from a wide variety of people, which is good, then it's hard to incorporate a virtual setting at the same time. Now, if we want just a virtual setting and then two community open forums at two different locations in the district, what happened? We've done all those things. For a while there, that's all we would do, virtually.
And you know your community. You might even say during the planning meeting, we would like to have at least one virtual because you know your community, and maybe that's where you'd get a higher response. But that would be part of the planning meeting.
We would take your direction.
Can I just follow that up quickly? We do have a lot of languages spoken in our district, and we really want, I think one thing we'd want to try and do is bring some of those people who might feel a language barrier. If you had to address that and how to be done so?
Sure, just last, two years ago, I did the search for Urbana, right next to Champaign there, and they've got a high Haitian community there in Urbana. Don't know what the reason is, but all they speak is French. So I had to go to the University of Illinois, says they're a French teacher, and there was plenty of French teachers, a professor, and we paid someone to come and do a community open forum just for the Haitian community in their own language. That's just one. We have, all the surveys and others are available in a multitude of languages, including Mandarin and Spanish and other kind of secondary languages here in the United States. We'll design whatever you feel is necessary to get those voices heard.
Then with that, do you have folks to just kind of validate the languages or to make sure, because, you know, when you think about like Spanish, for example, there's also a lot of subsets of the Spanish, like, just in terms of validity, like what?
So I own the firm, I'm the president. My partner was a fifty percent owner of the firm as well, as well as Dr. David Negrone, who was the first generation Mexican-American. He looks at those very, very particularly because it's very near and dear to his heart. Obviously, he's as far as the Spanish culture, he's a Mexican-American. He takes that very, very seriously. So he, we don't do anything in the Spanish language version of either the surveys or the open forums or anything else without his, he screens everything.
And similar to other languages, you have those checks on it?
Absolutely.
Sorry, we had a little tag on it.
That's okay.
Oh gosh, we want that, we want that, obviously. It's more fun.
Yeah, well, so thank you so much for sharing like your processes, your experience examples, but, you know, just to kind of close out before we kind of open it up, what sets you apart from other firms?
Diana's going to have some opinions, but I'm going to share mine. I think first and foremost is our track record of ninety-seven percent. Ninety-seven percent of our superintendents that we've placed have received second contract offers from their, from their district. That's gone up since we've taken over the firm. My own personal, I've done over 55 searches, is 100%. Every single person that I've ever searched for and placed has received a second contract offer through the Board of Education. I think that's not scientific, I think it's just because I have a great passion for this. And I think it's very important to have the right leader in the right place, and it's the fit that makes it important. What makes 207 different and unique is different from Oswego or Rockwood or Urbana, the other districts that I've mentioned recently, together with dozens more. I think we run, our firm runs on three credos too. We take care of our boards and communities, we take really good care of our candidates. They know that, that's why they go through our firm a lot to look for positions. We also, and most importantly, take care of our students. We want to make sure that the end result here is a good experience, a good learning experience for our students to grow in life. I think those are the things that set us apart. I hope you're checking references and doing Googles and everything else, because you won't see negative stuff about School Tech Connect up there. We take this very, very seriously.
And so I will add, in addition to the success rate and the data points, so I'm familiar with our other firms, what I feel like about School Tech Connect is we train not just the retired superintendents, but we train the current sitting, and sometimes people get concerned, like, oh my God, if you're a sitting superintendent, how can you possibly do this? This is, this is my passion. I'm going to retire soon, I'll be over with Kevin, I know, but I can't, I can't walk away and not have done everything in my power to ensure that the children of Illinois are cared for. And at this level superintendent, it is not, you can't leave it to change. And so for those of us who are sitting superintendents, it is literally a passion of replenishing the surplus of people who care about kids first. Walk in the door and say, every day of my career is going to be on intentional adult behavior to assure students success. It's not about ego, it's not about, oh, I'm a superintendent, it's not about any of that. It's about helping school districts find the fit of a person that who knows is going to be there at the back-to-school bash, or like there's swirping hamburgers with everybody else. And that's not always easy to find. And so that's, that's what drew me to School Tech Connect, is because of that underlying passion about doing what's right for the children of Illinois. And that's, the seat I sit in, I'm very, very committed to it, and I cannot imagine any other opportunity that I would have as an educator than to help replenish and supply people who have to do this work and do it well. And in particular, that it's a matter of who you are, because it doesn't matter about me or about Kevin, it matters about who comes in here and says, I'm the disappoint person for your community, they live with your community, they're at the Panera having lunch with people. I mean, it's just, it's about that. So for me, we got all the data.
Is Panera close by? I missed it. I had a lot of coffee.
Don't start the coffee.
I know, we were talking about coffee.
But, so from my perspective, the data speaks volumes, I just think it's the people that we bring to.
Just to give you some numbers, and I wrote this down before you started speaking, so you really, granted, Paige, forty percent of our firm consultants are active superintendents, which means that typically, there is one brush that paints this, we'll have one retiree and one active superintendent on most of our searches at possible. Fifty percent of our consultants are women or minorities or both, and that is unmatched in the industry. And when David and I took over the firm five years ago, it was about eighty percent old white men. So we have, we've worked because we want to reflect what the schools reflect, and we've worked towards that effort, we take that very seriously.
Do you have anything to follow up?
Just opening it up.
Yeah, I thought at this point, you know, anyone here has some follow-up questions?
I have one.
Please.
So following the search, following the hiring of the superintendent, what type of relationship, and for how long do you maintain with the new super in the district in terms of potential mentoring, or just follow-up with the new superintendent?
So for one calendar year, July 1st to June 30th of the following year, we offer monthly goal-setting and mentoring meetings with the superintendent to work on goals, issues, to work on board communications issues, to work on things that that person perhaps didn't experience in their former district or in their former role. So that is part of our fee structure, it's got nothing to do with anything added, so we do that on a gratis basis. So we're happy to do that. I like getting out in the field and, I'm done, I'm here, I'm right down the street here and be here once a month, maybe that person is me, but we haven't made that decision yet. I think it probably would be because I'm a high school guy, I work with, if possible, if we make a decision, if the board makes a decision sometime around triple I in November, you know, we'll talk about the timeline at the planning meeting. There would be perhaps a six-month window for some transitional work to be done with Ken and/or me and/or the Board of Education, or reduce the goal-setting, maybe retreat or something like that, we'll talk about that, but there are some, there are various options. But as far as the mentorship, that comes for one calendar year as part of our fee structure.
And I will just add to that, because I'm very active in our IASA, the State Superintendent Organization, and we also make sure that we, for new superintendents, that they're engaged in all of the mentoring activities that go on with that. And that is actually, I was just down there weeks ago, doing a presentation for new superintendents. So that's a whole structure that is embedded for support as well, and that's one of the things that we make sure that, if you're a new superintendent, that you get that support.
So Gary still does that up here, right?
Yes.
Okay. And the IASA is a very strong organization, I was a member of it for a long, long time, and that's a great resource, because the superintendent can be a lonely job sometimes, so you need some people to call.
I'm going to follow the trend overall, compared to five, 10 years ago, related to superintendent search market-wise, do you see that we are seeing more, does it happen more or less, or overall, what do we see? Why is there more search of superintendents compared to, you know, the previous years? What do you guys think these days?
The average superintendent tenure in the United States right now is 3.2 years. It used to be, it used to be about seven and a half years when I first started in the industry. Ten years ago, when I started with this firm, our average number of applicants for any position was about 52, now it's about 18 to 22. It's a rough job. People say, why would I want to be a superintendent and be in the newspaper and get yelled at at board meetings all evening long? You know, once a week or twice a week or whatever it is. Things are different in Maine, I get that, but I'm sure there are challenges here as well, which we'll get to. So it's a rough job. Now, I just finished Oswego in June. Oswego is, you know, a big unit district, 27 schools. We had 29 candidates, and 11 of those were from out of state, so we did a good job recruiting for that position. You've got to write, find the right firm and the right people that will allow for you to get the pool that you're looking for, so you have a tough decision. At the end of the day, all you need is the one right person. We're going to get that person for you. But those are the trends.
I have a question, it's a little bit technical, but I know that you don't, you make a guarantee that you're not going to recruit someone that you've placed for the first two term, two contract terms, is that right?
That's right, yes.
If you have placed someone elsewhere, and that person is within that, and you had recruited that person over there, and they want to apply for this job, will you turn them away?
No, no, that's against law.
We won't recruit them.
You won't actually actively recruit, but they, but they could see that it's available.
Oh sure, they can certainly apply.
I just wanted to make sure of that, okay? Thank you.
Look at me just for a second. We're going to get that person, whoever that person is, okay?
Yep, yep. I just wanted to make sure that I understand that.
Absolutely. We'll recruit- We won't recruit that person, we won't lift up the phone and say, hey, are you a student two oh seven?
Right.
We'll get some-
Because if you have the right person, we would not pick up the phone and call your person.
We don't want to pull your person away either.
Right, 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 okay. Does anybody have anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to go there. The question you would ask, because I think it's really important to notice, Kevin talked about the three-point-two years, and just that, it is, I'm telling, this is my fourteenth year in the seat, and it is, it is, it can be a lonely job, but it is one of the most fulfilling jobs we've ever had. If you have a great partnership with your community and your board, and you build that, you can, the longevity is there, but I think what's really important is that as a board, that you all have your vision of what you want to see May look like, and then that person becomes a partner, and that allows then for folks to say, I think what happens sometimes is, if there's not that vision, that partnership between the vision from the board community and that person being a partner in that vision, and then helping craft and shape and move it, that's when that sort of red discipline acts clear, and you move on to something else. But it can be, it can be a lonely job, but it's the most fulfilling job I've ever had in my life.
Oh, me too, I loved it.
Loved it, yeah.
I was a high school principal for seven years, and that's a lot harder job than being superintendent, in my opinion.
Yes.
I loved being superintendent. I had a great board, I had a great community, great teachers, and great kids, I mean, it was a great job. That doesn't mean, I had stumbles, don't get me wrong, and rocks were on me, but I loved it. We did some good things for some great kids.
And that's why I think Kevin keeps saying, we're gonna find a more person, because that's the idea, is your person is here, is an intricate part of the background.
Before we wrap up, because I think we're getting a little bit close.
Sorry.
No, 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 actually, we're a little ahead of schedule, so we're okay, but I did want to just throw it over to George, who's our assistant superintendent, did you have anything you might want to follow up? George is part of our process, and obviously important.
No, we don't have to call him, because we're ready to get to the questions for the IASA, we appreciate the board, and you're involved in this process.
We haven't had to look for a superintendent.
That's kind of a nice problem not to have, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, we haven't had to, so it's a new process for all of us.
Yeah. Actually, I, what's average timeframe from, let's say, from start to finish to making the recommendation, what do you see under split shifts, as far as the timeframe?
We'll talk about that at the planning, however. It's not, if a contract can be signed sooner rather than later, I don't think Thanksgiving's out of the ballpark. Don't quote me on that.
Nope.
But that is somewhat typical for where we are right now in the process.
Does anyone else have anything else?
Maybe just one, I'm building on that, actually respond, I guess, is this a good time to be out looking then?
It's the best time.
This is the best time.
It's the best time. The window's wide open right now. The longer wards delay these kinds of decisions, the more good candidates get swallowed up by other districts.
Usually by December.
That window starts to-
We've done BS searches.
We've done spring, yeah, thanks, we have done spring searches, but the candidate pool gets dropped a little bit, and so forth, we have good test rates, don't get me wrong, but you're in an optimal position right now.
Any other questions or thoughts? Okay, let me just, let me just let you know that we are on a, we are, our plan is to reach consensus today on a firm, and we would be reaching out the next date to let you know one way or another. If we do that, we would want to get some kind of agreement for our attorneys to review whatever your contract looks like, is that, that wouldn't be a problem?
It'll take me about ten minutes.
Okay. Because we have a board meeting Monday, and we would want to try-
Who's your law firm?
Frantic.
You know, our goal is, our client number is zero-zero-zero, and we were their first client.
Really?
Is Eris your attorney?
No, Todd Faulkner.
Todd?
Yeah.
He takes the train out there.
Yes.
He takes the train everywhere.
Yes, yes, he does.
I know him very well, so don't worry about it.
I just wanted to give you an idea of the time, the timeline here and our interest. We are very committed to moving forward, we happen to have a principal ship open here in the south.
You know Steve and the interim, right?
Yes, Steve and my president, so we want to complete one so we can move on to the other, so I'm just letting you know, you should be hearing something soon, one way or another.
Thank you very much, we're so excited, and-
And I know Steve very well.
Yeah, excuse me, he's not a boy.
Well, he's the chair of the board on the bike.
And I lived in Oak Park when he was superintendent, so it's a small world sometimes.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
We work together, right?
So, thank you, thank you very much, thank you for coming out, thank you for all your thoughtful answers.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, sir.
Very much.
Nice to meet you, thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you very much, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the time.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you, it's nice to meet you.
It's a small world, is it?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, appreciate you.
You guys have a good rest of your day?
You too, same.
Thank you.
It's a little sticky out.
It is, they definitely got hotter.
Yeah, who wanted the coffee?
Who wanted the coffee?
That's why I was laughing.
Yeah, yeah.
I had to do nothing about it.
I'm the same way, I'm the same way.
Yeah, now I want coffee, guys are talking about it a lot.
Thanks guys, take care.
Okay, take care.
Careful with the cords.
Yes, right. Okay, I think, you know, everybody might, we've got a little time, we've kind of built it into the schedule, if you need to take a break, or if you want to fill out your information.
Can I ask a procedural question?
Sure.
So, how do you want, are you collecting these, or is this just a worksheet for us?
Keep that for yourself, at the end, I think I'll collect everything.
Okay, so, I didn't know, we're not, so I was taking two cents.
That's fine. You do what, whatever works for you, I do encourage you to use the rubric.
Yes, sure.
Okay.
Like what? How much time do we have?
Yeah, do we have a- You know, I think, I think I have a nice turn on the do-over, you have, we have a few. Do you think we have enough?
Right here in the building, do you want to just get something?
Let me see.
Yeah, don't leave the building, we can handle it.
But if there's something in the building that they have-
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Do you want me to help search?
I was gonna go to, you know, my approach, I don't know, I'm gonna fill it out now, while everything's fresh in my mind. The harder thing is to compare one to the other, and you may want to adjust, it's really a tool for you, and then for all of us to kind of, to give us a starting point for reaching consensus.
So, what I was doing, I like to do this at the end.
That's fine.
And check all my notes here.
Absolutely, I get it, because then you're able to kind of compare one to the other, yeah. So, they're coming in too? Wait, they have our- Yeah, we have a little time, if they get here early, we can start a little room, so feel free to take a break. Ginny's gonna try and get us some coffee.
I don't know why I like to have coffee sometimes. You called me. Oh, I'm better, I'm still sore, but, no, I'm in a school board meeting, we have a little break right now, but I should be home like around six or seven. I'm sorry, what was it? You can still stop and see if it's fine. I did it. Yeah, I can walk.
Okay, we're technically in a little recess here, since no one's here, and I'm gonna take a break, so we will recess for about ten minutes. We are now back in session.
Do you need to do local?
I don't think so, everyone's here.
Pretty cool.
Yeah. Yeah, I saw that. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll be happy to pass it around.
It's like a copy.
She'll give you a hint.
Yeah. Who knows, they might be out there thinking, we're a little early, we're not ready, which is fine, we could wait, we could send things. We'll wait, we need time on that.
So, we're, this is our two.
This is our two o'clock, yeah. We can try and stay on that schedule.
On this rubric, personnel, is that in reference to people who we're interviewing, or they're-
My thought was that it was the people we were interviewing, but it, we can talk about that if you want.
George, why don't you try one of those, do you want to try one of those chairs, see if they're a little better than that?
Just kidding.
Oh, it helps, yeah. Are you hooking me?
Yes.
It's in your bag?
Try a different chair.
Yeah.
If you have to get up, just go to here. But maybe it's the chair.
Yeah, the chairs are very, like, at least that one has like a curve.
Yeah, the red ones, and there's a bunch of them right there. No, look, look behind you. Do we know how many are at this, this mess? I don't. There were three listed on the ledger.
I've got an idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's three.
Thanks for being here, space.
Yeah.
Singletti down there.
Hi, welcome.
Hold the curtain, tell us when.
Please cover, cover your seat.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, nice to see you as well, nice to see you as well. Who are you?
What I said.
We had a last-minute adjustment, we were in a smaller room, so we realized it was a little too close. Not that we don't want to be near you, but-
And I taught, I teach for Concordia, I believe we have a partnership with Maine, and I was in the innovative rooms that you have, that are in conditions.
Well, we're also, this is a, this is a public meeting, please sit, no, please sit, sit. This is a public meeting, it is being recorded, so, you know, if we had people, members of the public or others that want to come, we wanted to make sure we had room for them. Welcome.
Thank you.
We are very happy to have you here, we want to thank you for your materials and welcome you. Let me, I just want to give you a little bit of an idea of the process that we're gonna go through. We, the materials are very thorough, we're happy to have them. We didn't really want to have a presentation, we wanted to get to know you as individuals, as a group, we felt that was important. We do have some specific questions that we think may be at depth to what you have in your materials, we'll go through, and each one of us will ask a question. At the end of that, you know, we may have some follow-ups, you may have some more information that you want to share, so that's the process that we're going through. To start, if it's okay with you, if you could just introduce yourselves, maybe just a little bit about your firm, if you wouldn't mind.
Also, can we acknowledge that in the RFP, we responded with two resumes, we did not have Susan's, we do have it in here, because we can't get the information with you.
That'd be great, if you would like that.
Yeah, we wanted to see all the details.
Okay.
On paper as well as in person.
Okay, great, great.
We decided to just go first. Yeah, we're tossing a coin.
And we, if you just say your name also, because we, okay.
Absolutely, so I'm Mark Freeman, I'm the president of the United Association, I'm the founder, the company started in two thousand and six, I was one of the founding members. I was the real young guy that brought it at the time. So, I was the superintendent for seventeen years in Libertyville, and retired from there. And I'll steal a phrase from Glenn, I failed at retirement, and I give you all the credit for pointing that term, and so, fairly soon after retiring, I fell prey to the approaches of interim superintendent jobs. And I wound up serving four interim superintendents, one a year and a half in Morenca, a second one Niles Township High Schools, so District two nineteen, where I was the superintendent. And then, right next door, District fifty-nine, you know, Grove Village, I was the interim superintendent there. And then I finished it off in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, in Vernon Hills, at Hawthorne School District, where they had failed cease referendums, and I was very fortunate to come in and help pass it with your vote, as a resident. So, with that, doing searches, and of course, teaching at University of, so my background is fairly extensive, all told twenty years of superintendent experience. And a hundred to a hundred and fifty plus searches, Donna.
Hello, I'm Dr. Julie Coleman, and I am currently the superintendent of Gospel Districts sixty-seven in Warren Grove, just down the way here. And this is my, sorry, my fourth year as a superintendent, my background is mostly high school and unit districts, from teaching to administration, participating in superintendent searches, you know, in my own districts as well. And I am currently the vice-chair executive board at that, which is in Carla. So, hearing other districts' issues and being able to contemplate them in a larger perspective, making sure each district has a voice, and how we work with our legislators to do that is what is really important to me, and I know firsthand, being in, you know, unit districts and high school districts, that, you know, high schools of worship is a different animal, it's a different, there's many different challenges and opportunities that come along with it, but it requires a certain time period.
I'm Glenn Schliffey, I am, again, Mark chair, failed in retirement, I have been a, now a senior associate with BWP for the last seven years. Spent thirty-six years in public education, my last thirteen years were spent in the range school to qualify the superintendent. Again, in my failure of retirement, I then took a job with Concordia University, and I'm the superintendent program doctoral chair of that program, I served that role for five years and continue to serve that role. That's kind of the reference to the partnership that we had, where I actually had superintendent program house here in Maine, and we were close to jail, jail cares to- And we were closely chill, chill cares to, to form that partnership. Just a, a quick comment about our composition of our team. So when we come into a school district, we really think about the composition of our team. Mark is full-time BWP, retired superintendent, full-time BWP. I'm not full-time BWP, but I have a lot of flexibility in my, my schedule. And then we also include a superintendent as well to keep us grounded in the current work of superintendents. But we also recognize that when we enter into an agreement with the school board for a search, that it really, attention to details, communication, it's a lot of work. Mark and I handle those details, and Susan, who's committed to her community, is great in terms of networking, will be part of the interview process, but she will not handle the details of the search just because she's, you know, her first and foremost candidate.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and start the questions, and the first question we have for you is, do you have any specific expertise in recruiting superintendents for a school district like ours with our demographics?
Expensive, mainly in this area, but we are truly a national firm. So just this last couple of months, we just closed off searches in Savannah, Georgia, Charleston, South Carolina, Charlotte, Metonburg, Green Bay, Wisconsin. So we are used to districts with a lot of complexities, with various ethnic and racial backgrounds, where the student population is, is very different. Up in Wisconsin, very heavy Native American population. And, you know, we're used to working in this area where we deal with districts who have diversity in multiple ways. And we actually thrive, for instance, a whole of Flosmar High School, it's just a place where we've done a lot of work. We've done principal, we've done their principal, we've done their superintendent. We just have had a great relationship with Flosmar, we just placed a superintendent a year ago and after someone who was there for twenty-seven years. And, and again, being there and being comfortable in the community, we, we like to use them as a microcosm of what we do in diverse communities. Diversity, you had what everyone would expect.
I want to add to that, just, so I, I did a study five years ago now, in our, in our, I think, resistance and practices since 2006. And that comes in two ways, in that way, through a variety of districts, every district is unique in terms of making sure they can understand stakeholders and involve and find the right fit. We've been exceptional in finding the right fit, our perception data really goes against all the norms of superintendent contracts in that we have ninety-eight percent of our superintendents that go beyond their first contract. And, you know, so we find the right fits. The other part of the study that I'm doing now, as, as the marketing board will authorize or will authorize, would be the type of candidates that we provide to school boards in terms of diversity, gender, race, equity. And when we present six candidates, what are those six candidates like? And, and our, my initial findings are really that we provide for a real great variety of candidates in terms of their backgrounds, both their professional training, their own professional background, and then there, again, the issue of diversity. And that also comes in the terms of replacement of the diverse candidates that towards, if actually we decided to hire, presented this board decision, we want to provide a good candidate.
I want to mention, just, just maybe be a little more specific on what I'm trying to get at. A little bit drilling down is, our district is a little bit, we have three schools that are really different. The one you're sitting in here has a particular demographic, which is very different from Maine East, which is a little bit down the road. So I think, you know, our superintendent, our assistant superintendents would, would tell you that that's, that can be challenging to have that kind of difference, it requires a lot of balancing and nuance, and I'm wondering if you've had similar districts.
You have nine very, very unique communities, as Susan's accomplice knows, those nine unique communities, and each of your high schools looks very different with different challenges. And so I think that's something that is, something that is really an opportunity in this high school district. But not something that is, you know, uncommon in the marketplace these days. Neighborhood schools, schools that are often very, very diverse in that same district.
I was going to say also, we're very committed, we did two of your three feeder districts, we did superintendent search for sixty-three and for sixty-four.
Which kind of represent those demographics, we just have them all under one umbrella.
Absolutely, and, you know, all we can say is, you know, we talked to the folks there and both districts will highly, highly pleased with how the process works. Eventually, it's up to the board to make the decision who to, who to hire. We don't do that, but does the process work smoothly, did the pool represent what was expected, did the candidates represent themselves well, all of that. And I would say you'd get a real thumbs up. I'm pro, I'm positive you'd get a thumbs up.
Also, Carla, just a second, you have got that, I came from District 214. And so, and I worked at a middle school, which is like, you know, the stepchild of District 214, if you know about it, because we were the most diverse, we have a high socioeconomic needs. My, I was a bilingual special ed teacher, was my train for administration. And I, I totally understand where you're coming from, because that's a huge district, southern high schools, not to mention alternative schools. And you look at what Prospect High School needs versus what Morneka needs, which is so appealing, and Grove. Of course, the, you know, the demographics are so very different, but the tax dollars have to be divided equitably because of the needs of the district, so it's not quality, right? Not everybody gets the same thing, at least not everybody needs the same thing. And I think what really attracted me to working here, in addition to how diverse the people that I connect, that I've placed, and that are supporting you, is that understanding that this is, like any district, you have many things that can be more different in certain ways. And I think, as a candidate, who would report the candidate, who would understand that and be able to embrace that. And at the same time, you know, bring all your district, the whole, the district is one, right? You don't want one to be against each other, especially with you, you know, that, how that works, test person and whatnot, and being able to be proud of, which I think your district is just not amazing to have, you know, in general. So, I don't know, I hope that would be.
No, that, thank you, that gets added, yeah, thank you so much, okay. Terry?
Sure, hi.
Hi.
My, my question kind of revolves around methods used, and so I'd like to know, how do you assess and vet candidates to determine their suitability for our commercial organization? What are your methods?
Did you get the idea? I'll jump in.
You know, they're, the most important thing is, we don't have, like, a pool of ten people that we use in our research, you know? It's not like, okay, here's another search, we got this one, let's see which one will dip in. No, everything starts from scratch, so, and that's where you come in. We work hand in hand to create this profile with you. Now, the template we use may be similar for different, the input and the data is very different. And so we use one-to-one interviews with each of you board members, we do community engagement depending on who we identify and who we want to participate. And then we use a community open circle. And we bring those three pieces together, Glenn puts a beautiful report that we share with you, and that's what drives the type of people we look for in the candidate board. We then do the customary postings, reaching out, networking, you know, when we're at meetings, we're very active, all three of us in different ways, we're talking with people constantly. And even now, knowing that we're just coming to talk to you with the potential for doing this, we've had reach out. So if you get that, we'd like to reconsider, tell us more about it. And we don't like to jinx ourselves, so we won't tell you anything about it beforehand, but should it go this way? We have already had people express interest, so we follow up on all of that. Then we use our nationwide network, it's really helpful, and our colleagues who are in other parts of the country put vet, good, strong, people who might be interested in coming to Illinois. It's, it's not the most popular thing anymore to come to Illinois, ever since 2011, engine systems changed. But there are sometimes people from other states who have the right qualities, who see this as an attractive type of move. Then we follow up with them. The key here is us making personal contacts to follow them. And I think that's where, you don't lose the interest of the candidate, you really want to maintain that interest until you get down to the wire where we do our interviews and screening, then we sort out who we think is the strongest match.
Did that get to?
Yeah.
Pieces that you're asking for, since you're Carrie, and also, it may be important that our screening and our interviewing is to find candidates that want to be here, so we can look at and say, well.
We talk anybody into it.
Very different high schools, a fourth high school, but we want people that want to be here. And see that the unique aspects of this district has something they're excited about, that they've had experience with, but they're also excited and really embrace those opportunities and challenges.
I would say there's a big difference between wanting to be a superintendent and wanting to be a superintendent from District 21. And I think that, that's what makes the difference so big for candidates, because sometimes you go, I just want to be a superintendent. How many jobs are there? Right, and, you know, BWP, BWP is such an amazing job, making sure, like, we're not going to, they're not good fit for this. You just not talking to candidates about that, it's not their strength, their business background, and also among the communities one. So it's always impressive that they don't just say, you know, want cool and then ferret them out for, you know, searches that are working. I think that's, that's really critical, I mean, there's a piece of research that we've heard, especially now. And if you want someone who wants to be here, who wants to adhere to the success of this district, it's a great opportunity.
That sets me up nicely.
Thank you, yeah, yeah.
I think so, what I wanted to kind of understand a little is, like, how do you do that? How do you make the match to kind of the organizational culture that we have here? Like, kind of making sure that, not only what they say, but also, like, what they're really looking for from a cultural perspective and even from a leadership perspective, how do you go about making those assessments and so forth?
Well, we use the, we use the profiles, we just communicate that's the starting point. Now, we then, again, do our reach out to candidates. We don't twist an arm or hit anybody over the head to be an advocate. The last thing you want is a reluctant superintendent. You want, as Glenn said earlier, somebody enthusiastic about it, who really sees 207 as their destination. And so we get to that point where we have those pieces in place. Then we do the rigorous, find out about people by using our networking and our connections. We don't just accept the fact that somebody has a letter of reference or something. No, we follow that up even more so. And we have enough, again, our organization is big enough where we have, we control over everybody. If somebody is a not a state person, we'll know that too. And so we do an extensive follow-up. Nothing's perfect in this world, nothing is perfect. We will never stand there and say, we could never make it this day, or something couldn't slip through. But we're diligent, we're on top of things, we know where to look behind the scenes for issues regarding a candidate. And again, we hold those candidates to the fire for being accurate and giving us information.
As someone who went through the process of that, it was very rigorous. I felt like they talked up, like, everybody had a lot of this. I sat down.
On your behalf, it's rigorous on their behalf, and then you get the.
I was saying, as a candidate, I just wanted to share my experience, because that might make it more visible. So I met with, I met with the group twice, I had to meet with two separate groups of people. And it wasn't your kind of typical interview questions that you might talk about your leadership style. It was really about what were my values and my beliefs? And, and how would I, how would I, how could I live that mission that I have for myself as an educator? And then what that fit might be like for certain places. And so in addition to talking to everyone and, you know, going through a deep dive of your background and preference checks, which I listed to all, all reputable firms, would you get? It's the amount of times I had to meet these folks before I, they even put my name forward for a search. And there were times when I said, hey, I saw that open, and Mark's like, you know, that's not, that's not for you. That's not a good fit, they want this, or they want this, or you want this, and you want that. And I think that's really, to me, that's really what made my superintendency so successful, because I, I, I did have other opportunities, and so, some were with search trips and some weren't. But I felt so comfortable walking into my first superintendent job because of the process that I went through and what they went through in the school board, to know that we all knew we were getting into, and it was such a good transition because of that.
Yeah, I mean, I will survey board members and superintendent candidates, whether they, only one gets a job, but we survey all the candidates who have been superintendents as well. They say that exact same thing in the student board, if it was all about fit, it was, was that it with us as candidates? We, we saw board members, we saw high-quality candidates that wanted to be in our district and knew that our district was special and wanted to really capitalize on those, those opportunities. And candidates that we communicated clearly what, what are the leadership profiles in areas that are absolutely critical in terms of this district, so that communication, clearly, again, based on your feedback, your community feedback, of what does it look like, what are we looking for in our next superintendent? We don't want somebody who has had, you know, a sequence of in the district and out and up. We want people who want to be here and, and have a home here, and that's where our amazing success in terms of our candidates that come to districts and stay and, and have successive contracts.
And I said, what if I don't have it, I may need to go back. So the other thing I found very helpful about this process is I, every time you hire a superintendent, there is an agenda, something has to be done, one has to be undone, you know, depending. And so by knowing that kind of going in, you know, there were certain, like, okay, yeah, that's in my bag, I can do that, I believe in that change, or whatever, whatever the goals of the superintendent, of the board is. Because you're going to need this, if you want this next superintendent to do something maybe different than what you had, or not good or bad, but also who, if you have a rise, like, we need to, we need to pass a referendum, right? You want to know that the person who's doing that can be like, yeah, I know enough, I can go in, or I have enough resources, or I know how to get this help, as opposed to, you know, this district is looking to implement their DDI program. You know, how would you change that? And so those are the kinds of questions that I was asked through this process, because those were questions boards asked and wanted in their candidates, or whatever your, I don't want to say agenda, but I'm going to say that. Whatever your agenda is for looking to be here, because we all want to be successful. And we want you to be successful, we want this district, our families, our students to feel successful, and this organization, we want people. to feel successful, and this organization, we want people to be a good fit. So it would not serve me as a superintendent to just be pushed into a job, even though maybe I could get it for you, right? But having that conversation and that fit, it helped me decide, well, I want to do that.
I think, maybe just a quick call, I think it's sometimes it can be difficult to get it like leadership qualities or stuff like that. I mean, I guess I wondered, do you use any type of tool? I know there's tools out there like that you can assess kind of leadership capability or acumen or learning agility, whatever those things might be. Do you use anything like that, or is it really kind of your assessment of the individual?
We have to use Strength Finder.
Strength Finder.
Strength Finder. District choice. And what we found is we just said, oh yeah, let's do it. And then we go and extract the stuff, the information, don't pay any attention to it, didn't use it. Followed repeatedly, people were not using it. And we found districts not opting for that. It's been about two uses, probably, but we have access to that, we can do that. It's more, this is more observational and connecting with other people. Sometimes that's even more important.
Thank you.
Sure.
Gin, that's a gin, yep, gin.
I was looking at the information here, and you guys got a quite impressive experience and past successes, including Dr. Ben Connors too. You guys did that too, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I was looking at that too. Wow.
So.
We'll use a talk. And Ed? Please don't put it anywhere.
Appreciate your time today. Thank you.
That'll let us know.
We like to say about Ben that he stayed in the family, right?
We were just with him last night, actually. And we brought all the new base superintendents together to have dinner. Just cheerlead and coach them and say, hey, go get it. And we were just giving him such a hard time. He knew, of course, that we were. Say, hey, you know what, I don't know if we should mention your name or not, so keep quiet. So you did it, so we're okay.
Yeah. Anyway, so a lot of accomplishments, a lot of past successes and so on, very impressive. And related to, Dr. Susan was mentioning about the background check and so on. When conducting this kind of like a reference checks to all those candidates, how do you ensure the comprehensive background, you know, assessment when you do this background?
So. Yeah, so we would, first of all, they would list references, but it's a very, it's a very public world, and everybody knows everybody, and it's data in our world. And so before a candidate would even certainly come to the board, or in the midst of coming to us in terms of screening, we would do multiple reference checks. We also do a Google search. And you have to look at all the things in those.
The first question they ask you, is there anything we're gonna find out about you on last week that you didn't tell me today? I asked them, no.
Yeah, we have, one of our associates has a business that's her business. So she does in-depth Google searches. And she is a really nice gentleman, I have to say. And so we kind of pride ourselves in kind of slipping through on that.
Yeah, I was Melissa Michaels' reference when Ben called me. Because I worked, I was Melissa's manager in previous district. And I mean, and that's how actually Ben and I became colleagues, because we had such a robust conversation about Melissa and her strengths and what she might need to be more successful and fit and her background. And I mean, obviously, she's been very successful. She's moved up, but that's actually how I first met Ben, my son's dad is a church owner. But it was through that reference check because you make connections with people in this very small, night hour, education that we're in. And by, when you call my references, you know, sometimes, there are some districts who just, you get a reference and it's like a click on line or fill out these answers. And I always, like, you never do that, you know, because it's just all, it's, you don't need to do a personal thing. You make the reference, and it doesn't give any personal, there's no connection, there's no communication. And so the folks that gave me the reference, and then they called people I didn't put down there anyway, because they had people who knew me, right? And from many districts. I think that is what helps great, very successful candidates to be here. Because it is about, if you do a superintendent, if you are a servant of the public, so you have to have someone who basically, you know, can represent your district in a very positive light. And you don't get that from, easier ways to get a superintendent.
And that reference also included because everybody could interview for an outstanding district. Like, we would also have a public presence. And that public presence includes things like survey data. How well are they performing, how well are our stakeholders feeling served by that ED program, or that department, or that district position? It could include panorama surveys that I think you have here, or five essential surveys. So the public presence is also something that we look at in follow-up in terms of current performance.
Just to follow, if I could, in your materials, where you talk about candidate assessment, it says here, discussing and offering options and recommendations for the board to conduct formal background checks of the final candidates. Is that all separate? Is that something we would take on separately, or?
It's like finger pointed, like, there's certain things that the board would have to. Because you have to go through the state to do those things. When you get, just because they're predicting now that they passed the face law and, you know, these forms.
So state, federal.
Yeah.
But everything other than that is part of what you're offering?
There are times, though, Carla, there are board presidents who want to speak to, say, a board president of another district, that they would like to have a conversation part of their process. We always think that helps. That's not something that we would neglect well ahead of that process. But board members sometimes want to speak and get questions answered themselves the way.
Okay, I was thinking along the side, okay.
But there are legal documents that I'll get more into.
Okay, thank you.
And I wanted to, like Glenn, we were mentioning about the confidentiality discrepancies. So what measures do you have, you guys try to protect the identities of the candidates who wish to remain anonymous until, you know, later stages of a search?
I'm going to let Mark respond to that, because that's such an important issue.
Well, one of the first things we do, if, say, you selected us, you would have played. And that would be a half hour, forty-five minute, not a long drawn out thing, just to highlight some things. And in that meeting, we would discuss what type of search do you really want to conduct? Totally open search from beginning to end, that means you cannot protect anybody's name. What that will do is that does bring that pool down, no question, because there are people who don't, their names are. Then the other option is a closed search, totally closed, where no names are divulged, only to the board. And then at the end, the board makes a decision, more popular today than ever. And then we've created a hybrid search, where we protect the names until the very end, and then, right as the Board of Education, you are determining who your finalists are, you will then include a hetero-geography, as we call it, maybe some boosters, administrators, a collective group who would then act as a boot to give you feedback. And those people would sign a confidentiality agreement that they would not mention their name or anything like that. That's become very popular too. Think about this market we're in as a type of market. You don't want to give people a reason not to apply. And the reason, if they think, as soon as I put my name, everyone's going to know, and I'm working in District X, and the whole District X is going to know, and my status goes from there to there. And so we don't want that. We want them to maybe not be your choice, and that be the reason why they're out of the process, not because people heard their name. So we're kind of, we can do any. And we can come up with a third or fourth iteration of any of those things. But we have to be cognizant of the fact that the market is today, the fact that there's ten, fifteen big searches this year, it's a big year for retirees. And I think you have, trying to trace it back to the impact of COVID, people getting contracts during COVID, and now those are expiring and they're retiring. And so.
I don't really retire.
Yes, yes. And people want to do what we're doing at a young age.
It's a magic.
So what we really say to you is, here, here's the advantage of going with option one, here's the advantage. Two, here's option three. And you want to make it action four, we'll work with you. But it certainly is in the best interests to try and keep those names confidential. We kept that very confidential all the way through sixty-four. They chose to do a close search till the very end. And that's when things got out, the very end. We knew that. So you are in a position where it's not like there's going to be a hundred people, and you don't care if somebody jumps out. You want to keep everybody who's interested, so you can make the decision as to who you want in and who you want out. That's going to be your.
And just one more thing, as a person going through it, you know, reflecting on the process, the amount of documents and things I had to put together and present to these folks, I mean, it was stressful. It was, you know, I had to work on, I'm sure, I had a thirty day plan, I had a sixty day plan, and I, you know, that was required for them, for me to perform because they said, you're going to need to speak to this district to go on a note. Now, just so happens that we wanted this to go on a note, but I had it all bound, and that was important for them to know that as a candidate, I could speak to that, and I had thought about it, I'd done my homework, and I could be ready to jump in. And so that is also part of that, that process. Pretty, I mean, it's very rigorous.
Ed?
What strategies do you employ to get input from stakeholders, whether it be us as a board, staff members, community members, just regarding the expectations and priorities for that chosen superintendent?
Well, the first thing is, we do one-to-one interviews of these community members. So one of us will set up a couple of phone call time, and we'll do about a half an hour of questions. We have a couple of lead questions, and then here are your issues, or your ideas. And we'll combine all that together in a report. We're not going to say so-and-so said this, so-and-so said that. No, we'll put it, and that's masterful that anyone does that. And then the second piece is, really, we work with you in this, in this planning meeting that I mentioned. That's where we plan, how much community engagement do we want, where, when, how? Community engagement generally, I have to be honest, nowadays, we see less and less involvement in people coming out to these meetings. You think, oh, here, look at all the students we have, we're going to have thousands of people, you know, but that's just the nature of things.
Not because of what the board is requesting, but because the community's not coming forward.
That's where it is. That's where it is. Unless there's a hotbed issue somewhere, and there are places where things are up for grabs, and it just, we're not, we're not saying anything about any other district. We're there to help get that through. But typically, you get a handful, mainly because we then have the third piece, which is an online survey. And so the online survey is a leadership quality survey. This is where, really, we don't want to hear, you know, about your child's geometry teacher or the coach that didn't play your child in the beginning. This is all about the leadership qualities, and it's a forced choice survey. So we get a ranking, and we get to see what the qualities and the interests are of all the participants. Now, over in sixty-four, we had, what did we do, fourteen hundred responses? So that was, that was one of the biggest we've ever seen. And so it was very helpful.
I want to address that for a minute, if I could. Because of the nature of our district, we will get a large turnout, for example, from the main south community. What I think we would be concerned about is reaching into the other communities, some of, there are language barriers, there are things like that. How would you address that? Because that would, I can assure you, that would be important to us.
We did that. In East Maine, in sixty-three, we had no issues. We had a pretty good turnout in sixty-three also. Could ask, Alex Burke, I think she's still the board president, she'll verify, you know, how that came together in multiple languages. They were wonderful communications persons in sixty-three, and she was very helpful. And we can translate some things in multiple languages, but we're really, our survey is already looked up in English and Spanish. It's where you get into other multiple languages that we have created.
And there are functions on Google that you could use for Google forms? We, there are forty-seven languages located in my district that has seven hundred kids. And everything we do is a fat mindset. People want our strategic plan, everyone gather up, we have Google Translate, Europe, and Japan, old Russian email, to make sure that the words we show are translated, like, meant what we say. And so we can do that with surveys as well, with certain projections. It's never exact, right? I was driving my friend to the superintendent of Volca, and she can look at their website, it's called Avolcado, it's like that, Capo district, so she can make, oh, I don't think this will translate.
We need to correct that, yeah.
It's difficult though. But also, if you have community leaders or liaisons, if you're with your app, and other organizations, you know, those are sometimes places where we can help get, if you feel like there's a non-recentive, um, place to.
And we would work closely with your, with your school, the district communities, to both communicate and discuss resources in support of the district, whether it's for participation in the survey. We've had a lot of success with that. But we do compare back to the, to the district and the school in terms of the network and the, to follow up on Edward's question. So at the end of all of that, we have board interviews, we have surveys, we have community forums, multiple, staff, students are often a forum, open community, parent forums. I take all of that data and prepare a report for the board in terms of the themes, the kinds of things that we heard most frequently in those forums, and we present that to the board, along with using that data to create a leadership profile. Here's what the perfect candidate in any high school district in those lives. And then we encourage the board to then post that on the website. There's a, there's a loop back to the people who have participated in the forums in the surveys. Here are the results, here's the news that we heard consistently. We don't ever attribute that to individuals or individual groups, we always get the things we heard consistently across the forums.
We never go back and wait at anybody said this, this candidate, that we protect everything.
Okay. Sheila?
So thank you so much for sharing your processes, your experiences, but just to kind of, like, overall, what sets you apart from other search firms?
Yeah, it's my favorite. So I could share, I could talk to you for the next hour about the kind of data, success data that we've had, that comes from both satisfaction survey and then persistently survey, but I won't do that, I won't. Carrie, I'm not going to bore you with that for the next hour. But one of the things that is, to me, the most critical things that we do is that we have a formal entry program for a full year.
have a formal mentoring program for a full year that lasts oftentimes longer than that year. So for example, you hire us and you hire a superintendent, we will have somebody from our firm that will be an assigned mentor. And what does that look like? That looks like frequent contacts and support in terms of transition to the position, even somebody who's inexperienced superintendent, comes to me, things are different, and I have some questions and I need a safe place to talk and develop some strategies. That's turned into, I'm going to just use my experience as a mentor, I have, I think, eight right now, only one of them's in the first year, the others have lasted now as many as six years. But I had a board president and superintendent ask me to meet with them because they were struggling with the evaluation system that they have with superintendent. Both the document and the process was just not meeting their needs at all. And that's an area of my own research that I met with the three of them. We had a superintendent, high school superintendent named Bradley Burden, who was looking at really trying to work more closer to the board in terms of systems, better goal setting, better measures, just really being more continuous improvement focused. And that's an area that I just had, we brainstormed and talked, and I was a thought partner with that superintendent as he was presenting that to the board and to the community. In addition to the, to the thing that we did last night, which is, and was there, we just informally talked, how's it going, how's your transition been? Can we do lunch? He's a big golfer and I'm a golfer, so we were here, we set up a golf date. And so that kind of cycle is a commitment to somebody's success. And we do the same thing with the board in a different way. Mark's outstanding, but he'll, he'll call Carlos, how's it going, how's the transition going, making you any help with. And that, so that relationship doesn't end when there's a superintendent hired in place. That's just the beginning in terms of our relationship. And I think that, to me, we're the only ones that formally do that in part of our agreement, formally our agreement.
For me, what's such a hard, and I've been part of other searches, of other search firms, and I'm very exposed, and what always amazes me, yes, you know, last night at dinner, and, you know, Mark, which we just found, we just weren't attending, they were three different color. And the diversity in that, you know, both in background, ethnicity, language, culture, but also location in the state, you know, we always feel like there's no people in our district, there's no people like us, but then you talk to someone out in the western suburbs, and maybe our experiences are similar, and we can learn from one another. And I think that networking piece, because superintendents are very non-deutical. And I couldn't tell you how many times, I got hired July first, twenty twenty. And, you know, with the pandemic, like, if I get Mark to just help me just do a regular day-to-day, but also without my, to be able to get through hybrid and those kinds of challenges. But I have made so many, that my network is so large now with people from all over the state, and they're just, it's such a diverse group of people and thoughts and experiences and backgrounds, and that really helps us all grow. And just bringing in new superintendents and saying, hey, we're all here, we're a team. And it was, it's a wonderful, it's a wonderful benefit of being connected to these ones.
And I don't mean to, but we're running a little bit, little bit behind here, so. No, no, it's okay, I just, we've got other people coming in, I don't want to keep them waiting. Does anyone have any brief follow-ups? George?
Quick question, what's the estimated timeframe for a superintendent search?
We're talking anywhere from about three to four months in this period we'll be with you. We have, we've plotted out the timeline, and from start to finish, it starts us at the end of this month and finishes us shortly. So, you know, and that's the kind of, yeah, it gets a little crowded, like, right around Thanksgiving time, and you try and fit in holiday preparations and interviews with candidates. And that's why we do that really early on, kind of identify dates, lock them into all of your busy calendars, and then when it comes to ready to go, then we follow the other steps. A lot of things, we don't need a million meetings with you, because a lot of things are all set up and organized, we stay in contact with the board president, information's handed out, but then stuff is done behind the scenes on a regular basis. So we plotted out this whole calendar for you.
Thank you. So you'll pass those out to us?
Yes, I'm going to give you a packet there.
I just want.
Yeah, go ahead.
What type of a guarantee do you offer in regards to recruitment of candidates once we hire a superintendent?
You know, we won't recruit that candidate for as long as their contract is, or as long as they're staying in the district. We're very, very ethical about that kind of stuff. Things happen. There have been cases where mutually, the board of education and the superintendent said, hey, you know, maybe we can break, and the board will give permission to the superintendent to work with us, even though we placed them, but to work with us in another search. And that's happened several times, that's not a deal.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
One more on that, I guess. So if there's a candidate in a district that is interested, but it's someone you placed, and how do you handle that? If you've placed them there, they're interested in our role though, and it's, they haven't changed jobs, how do you?
Yeah, and we, we determine what the whole business is to say. Is, is this a discussion that you've had with your whole board, with the board you went? You know, they said, go ahead, explore, then it's a non-issue. But if you don't want to open that up, we're pretty much going to have to be ethical about this and say, until you get that okay, we can't refer. I think you want that ethical piece from us, you know, if we really were truly valued.
Okay. Thank you so much, and I don't mean to wrap up, but we do want to keep.
We will. Do you have a packet?
Yes, definitely.
One last comment. So we use this medical analogy when summarizing, when people say, why us, why us, yeah, and the medical analogy is very simple. If you were having a surgical procedure, you wouldn't choose a surgeon who was doing the procedure for the first time. Experience counts heavily, hands down, with the number of searches that we've done, and what you see here, we can provide for you what you need in this.
With surgical precision.
With surgical precision.
You can add that to your, I like a little credit for that.
We really appreciate it. We only have seven, so George and Jenny, you want?
That's okay. We only have, yeah. Give one to George and it'll be for Jenny, too. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's okay with you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much. Take care of the rest of your day. Oh, just so you know, we plan to make a decision quickly, should be hearing that from us within a day or two.
Oh, great, great, great.
And you said your information. Yeah, so my.
Yeah, oh, hi. Didn't know you'd be here.
I'm calling, I want to, I want to.
Yeah, well, you did, yeah, yeah. Thank you so much.
See you tomorrow.
Yeah, is it, is it, yeah, what time?
Crackadon, wheeling.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, thank you, okay. I don't know, I didn't see an email.
Thanks for all the communication, really appreciate that, thank you so much.
All right, see you.
See you tomorrow.
Okay.
What, what of the folders does say, it's my business card?
Okay. I'm not sure, we'll find it.
Carla, are you going to go into recess?
We're, we're going to, no, we're not.
Nope, you're going to keep, okay.
Yeah, unless people have to leave.
Then I'll escort him out and bring the other one in.
Not yet, I just see some, you guys want to take a five-minute recess?
Have Ginny text me.
Five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess, thank you.
Welcome, welcome. Please have a seat, would you like some water?
I think I will.
Okay, we'll get it for you, we'll get it for you.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and first of all, we apologize, we're a little bit behind schedule, I do apologize for that. We will try to move ourselves along a little bit better for you. So, welcome. We are in open session, just so that you know, and we are recording this. I want to just describe the process that we're going through today. The materials that we got have been very helpful and thorough, I think. So we really didn't want a presentation, a formal presentation, we wanted to take this opportunity to get to know you a little bit and ask some questions that we think dig down a little deeper into things that are of concern to us or that we feel are important to our search. So each of us will be asking a question. And at the end of that, we'll have an opportunity to maybe follow up on questions and also give you a little bit of time. Hopefully we'll have time. We're going to be behind, we're not going to cut your time short, but we'll just, you'll have an opportunity to do that. So before we start, if you could just introduce yourselves and just tell us a little bit about yourself and your firm.
Certainly. I'm Ken, I'm a retired superintendent from District Three Hundred, El Gahum, Goddini. And as of a month and a half ago, I was the interim superintendent for Two Fourteen for six months. So that's a little bit of my background, and I've been with HYA now since twenty fifteen.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Carmen Yala, recently retired in February, was the state superintendent of education, very low. Forty years service in public education, was the superintendent of Harold North, District Ninety-eight. I have a strong background working with communities that are very diverse and.
Thank you.
My team was for old, I had the privilege of serving as superintendent of District Sixty-two for a year, so it felt really great. Coming here today, going through some of my staff, and certain assets familiar with Two Oh Seven, based on the fact that my students went to, I've been with the firm since two thousand and six, even while I was a superintendent, I did lead searches back then, because we just can't take that kind of time away from your just, right? But I did with the firm, one of the local survey associations in the firm, and like Carmen and Ken, over forty years in education at every level, you can think of, delighted to be here, and thank you for the audience.
Okay. Okay, well, let's start with, I'll start with the first question, and if you could talk a little bit about specific expertise you might have in recruiting superintendents for schools, districts that are similar to ours, and I say that, I just want to mention upfront, we do have, I don't know if it's, it's not unique, but we do have very different, we have a, the school you're sitting in is, you know, has one population, and then we have two other schools that are more diverse than Main South. So we just are looking to hear about experience you've had with similar districts, similar size, similar demographics.
Well, certainly, Two Fourteen is a little bit like Two Oh Seven, obviously we're through neighbors. Before I became the interim superintendent for Arlington Heights or Two Fourteen, I also served as the interim superintendent for U Forty-six, Elgin, for actually four years. And so Tony Sanders and I are now in our state superintendent schools, talk about the irony of all of this, how my and the team worked it out very close together. And all three of ours are still very active in the profession, and so we found out that our best of recruiting is by the simple, you pick up the phone and make phone calls. Advertising is very important, but it's the connections, it's the relationships that you know, talk to other superintendents that are in the field that maybe they're interested in moving on, or they might know of someone who would be a good fit for Two Oh Seven. So I'll stop right there, and we'll all kind of get to that.
I've had experience, particularly when I was assistant superintendent, Plankville. Plankville has five high schools, and very, very different from one level to the other level. And so improvement was done for leadership positions at those high school levels, I followed the principalship and specifically. So as Ken mentioned, a lot of person-to-person networking, and that is something that is very important to be able to, to be able to all the students in the district. So having those networks and those connections to different organizations, as HYA has a strong relationship with ALS, which is a mental organization, and also the Latin administration, and those are important connections and networking that we're drawn with.
My most recent search has been Niles Township High School in nineteen, and why is that another really great district that I used to be associated on that search? And it is, it's different because, you know, we also, Ken and I, did Lake Forest High School, which is a very different story than New Niles Township. So we did have to recruit Far and White, we recruited a project looking from Connecticut, who actually is a social. So one of the reasons of HYA is that we have over a hundred associates across the country. So whenever we have a search, we call on all of those managers, where the leadership will come down, all the opposing, all of the district, and say, if you have any candidates that you can cure for, or that are state, that might be likely candidates for those particular positions. So that is a very useful tool for us in a lot of those situations.
Thank you. Terry?
Yeah, hi, welcome. I was wondering, how do you assess and vet candidates to determine their suitability for our organization? Or some methods or strategies?
Sure. Well, most of the candidates, I'd say two-thirds of the superintendents that end up getting under my board or the assistant are from, we've reached out or some of our colleagues have shared their names with us. So right off the bat, we know the candidate, and we know that they're matched to what your stakeholders said that they want in the next year. We do very comprehensive public engagement, and we define the profile, and so we share that with others. So we don't want to bring somebody in here that doesn't match what the profile of this district is. We also, we go through every single application that we have, and there are people that we haven't heard of that apply for the job, and we'll look through all of their resumes and information and check references on them. But we will also interview the candidates ourselves, since we do not send anybody ever to Board of Education that we haven't personally had in, how, granted, the last few years they've been on Zoom. Plus, we have them from all over the country, so we don't want the board to have to incur charges for a lot of state candidates. So we feel like this will be any comprehensive, and then we call on our network too and say, hey, do you know this individual? And tell us about the real story here, because the paper story doesn't always tell you this.
So you kind, just so I can understand, so you kind of post it, and then you'll look at the candidates that you have or that you already have and that apply for that, and then you, and then you interview?
The questions that we ask for, the screening interviews, are all based upon the information we know is very important for Two Oh Seven. And as Jane just mentioned, this leadership profile report, it really has the voice of the board, of the community at large, of the faculty, of the students, and after a while, you start hearing, seeing similar themes and trends, that, you know, this is a very important aspect of the board for Two Oh Seven. And so we then look at the candidates' resume and their background, because we want to find a fit, something that they've done in the past that would be a good fit. We're not interested in theory, we're not interested in the research, we want to know what have you actually learned or done in your prior positions that would be a good fit for Two Oh Seven. And so as Jane just mentioned, so when we present the slate to you of either five or seven people, you tell us how many you want, you'll see that they all have some kind of similarity in terms of the characteristics, traits that you are looking for in your next superintendent. So we don't just put people on, that's because of our firms, we have never done that. And a lot of times, we'll, we'll have people that are really good quality candidates, but I don't think Jane and I and Carmen say, I don't think it's going to be a good fit for Two Oh Seven, we really don't, so let's not put somebody on there that just say, okay, we fulfill your obligation. No, we want to make sure. Your job is very, very difficult to screen from the seven to five, the three to two.
Dr. Collins, I would add to that.
Dr. Collins, I would add to that, that we have three experienced district superintendents at the unit district, at the elementary district, at the state superintendent. So we have a certain intuitive sense when we're talking to candidates, that we can pick up on different things, and as Ken said, our goal is to really match those candidates with you and have the opportunity to screen as close as possible to what it is that you're using. Thanks.
Okay, Dean?
Great, thank you for those responses. So kind of building on that, Terry's question, what methods do you then use? You mentioned intuition, are there any specific methods that you use to kind of assess leadership ability, cultural fit, if you will, for our organization?
I will start. Part of the questions that are generated, which can be, as Ken mentioned, they come from the survey information, the focus groups, and we need to find out from the community, from the board, what it is you are looking for in the next leader or this district, and that's very, very important. There are some specific leadership questions, if you will, that have the tried and true that would be asked, and then there could be some follow-up questions if you start to pick up on some traits or characteristics that you want to find more information about. Certainly reviewing the resume and their experiences and where those experiences have occurred tell us a lot about.
The other thing that we do is an individual interview, which is important. One of the things that we do after a interview, individually, each board member really tries to understand your perspective on the needs of the district and what type of community you are. And that's really useful for us, and that is all part of the comprehensive leadership profile, right? It really gives us insight, I'm here very close to the situation, obviously, so as a board, we provide us with really very much insight as the time to turn to them to see how they work in this district.
So to give some specifics, so I know in one district, the board, they really wanted the next superintendent to be really engaged in the community because he felt there was a definite body. And so when we do an interview, they'll say, oh, I'm very involved in that kind of stuff. So I ask, well, specifically, what have you done? And what did you do last month? Okay, that's part of the community. Or when was the last time you actually went to a high school? Or when's the last time you actually talked to a student? Okay? But then we follow up. We follow up to see if that person actually did do that. And so whenever we make our final presentation or the slate, we've also done a lot of background checks on that candidate to make sure that she or he truly has walked the bar and not has just given us a comment that they think we want to hear from. So again, we want to make sure there's a very good post, post fit, and every community is different. I just mentioned that, that good community, they wanted to have something truly engaged. We had another one, they said, you know, we want somebody who really enjoys kids. We want the person to really work, enjoy with kids, and be at a school at guns, and get to know kids' names. So we found the person, and she's doing very well.
Thank you. Okay. Jen?
So Ken just mentioning about the background check for you and so on, very important. When conducting a search background checks or the reference checks, how do you guys ensure a comprehensive background assessment? Does that?
Well, on the final candidates, it looks like, say you're down to three, we strongly recommend that you have a background check, the top type of, and it's extremely comprehensive, very comprehensive. It goes into their degrees, it goes into their finances, it goes into their social media, so I mean, it is, it's very basic, and some people are uncomfortable with that, but we think it's really good insurance for the board. Prior to the time that we were, it's like, we do our own, we do a type of search, we do social media, we look at their tweet, we send it to Facebook, and see what types of things we're seeing, because there are some that's like there. So looking down on, we don't get into the level that the due diligence background check outside of the recommendation. And of course, we check references as well, but not just looking at the data right now. Obviously, they're not going to put a reference down that's not going to say good things, so we will call our associates, that means if you're working in a area, we're the same organizations to do.
And I would say of all the districts we've worked with in the last five years, every single district has done that due diligence background check. In fact, they'll sometimes do it for the top three, because it takes 10 days to get that information back and use the processes, then we pass it on to the board president, the board president passes it on to the board attorney, the board attorney says, yeah, that person was clean as a whistle, you have nothing to worry about. But it's real easy, because there'll be red flags, that means they'll be highlighted or something that you correctly know. So I'll give an example, several years ago, the board was very interested in this one candidate, and it came back that she had an open container violation when she was 20. She's now 51, okay, just talk about the years that have gone by. And the boards really struggled with that, they said, you know what, she'd been perfect, but if she would have just told us, that's all that would matter. But she didn't help it, and so that's what they said, no, we're going to campaign number two, because it is a screen. And I felt sorry for her, and I said, you know, why didn't you just tell us? You can't, you can't tell me that you forgot about it, because we told her how extensive this is.
We really do ask candidates, you know, we do ask, do you have any sort of, do you need to tell us right now? But we're willing to find out.
Good to know. And related to the candidate's confidentiality sense and so on, what measures do you company take to protect the identities of candidates who wish to remain anonymous until later stages of the search, if you may?
Well, that starts the planning of the board education, and really from where you want to be confidential, certainly. We have seen a lot of confidential searches, and I think there's the reason for that, you know, lots of social media issues, and when somebody finds out, it's so and so might be a candidate, who knows, it's going to come out, I mean, it's just, we would strongly encourage confidentiality, do most of the process. To get down to the wire, then you have to decide whether to respond or just follow. Now, we also have asked board members to sign confidentiality agreements, and we just did that, Ken just did a search in L.A., and all board members signed the confidentiality agreement. So just to be sure that we didn't leak out from any board members, maybe that's a lucky thing's happened, it just does. So from our perspective, we do our due diligence to make sure that we don't share any information, and we look at the board, we do the same, and we advise the candidates.
And if we were to expand and include others in the final rounds of interviewing, for example, you know, teachers or staff, they would also be asked to sign a confidentiality?
But it's an important question, because if you're looking for an experienced superintendent who's a proven leader, she or he is not going to jeopardize their job if it's not a good fit, because as we mentioned to the board during the planning meetings, these candidates are also contributing you, it's a two-way, two-way street. And we've also seen situations where the candidate was very well-liked by the board, the board heard that they're looking elsewhere, $20,000 more to keep them, and they stayed. So you have to keep that in mind, these things can change in front of time, and so confidentiality is very, very important. And we've done some searches where nobody knew who was the final candidate until the board reached a decision. And some of the press or some of the media didn't like that, but they said, this is true important to us, and so they said, we'll put it this way. And then they took the voting open session, everybody knew who it was, and they were happy because that person really had a rock star.
Okay, thank you. Ed?
What strategies do you employ together, input from stakeholders, whether they be board members, staff members, members of the community, to ensure that the candidates being presented, you know, meet the expectations and priorities of the district?
Very good question. We pride ourselves at HYA in having one of the most comprehensive community engagement processes in the law. So we start out by interviewing each individual board member, we do individual interviews with anyone else at the board, whether it's, you know, Ken Wallace or assistant superintendent, we'll do those individuals as well, but we do focus groups, we do as many focus groups as you'd like us to do, and the focus groups are across all levels of your community and include students. Sometimes we get our very best information from students. We will also do open town hall meetings, those can be in person or they can be virtual. We have, and this is one of those silver lightings of the pandemic, is we've had better participation in some of our focus groups when we do the virtual, parents don't have to have babies there, they don't have to worry about, even their teenagers at home, it's just been really effective for us. So there's that, and then we also have our research-based online survey, which I believe we have a copy of one that we recently did. So that gives us a lot of data to really put together a leadership profile, we feel we really listen to stakeholders as well. As Ken indicated earlier, there's usually a theme that goes through, but not always. Sometimes your teachers association will have a totally different opinion than maybe your support staff. It just really depends on the district. So.
Yeah, I kind of talked to you because there's always a divide. The faculty say, yes, we're pushing our students as far as they can, and the parents will say, no, you're not. So there's always a divide right there, we always kind of talk a little about that one. But we ask the same questions of all the groups, so the questions we ask the board members will be the same questions, we'll ask the faculty association, our leadership or whatever. And again, we're looking for themes, trends, and then, as Jay mentioned, our leadership profile reports probably most comprehensive, it'll probably be at least 20, 25 pages in, or we are, we've seen some firms, it's like five pages, and I said, Jane, why don't you get that job, okay? Because they hardly did any work. And, but again, it's a reflection that we give you, is a reflection on us as a team and on HYA, so we always want to do things that will help us in professional.
Well, here's an example, now, I am not really, I have an stretch of imagination, but Ken and I did a search in Ohio, and we had 55 focus groups. We even interviewed cats. I mean, there were so many groups, we started with seven in the mornings, worked till seven at night, so we are willing to do whatever the board wants, that, you know, you want what's right for your students, that's, I think, that's what we're trying, we even do what's right for students, we want to do what's right for the students.
What I would add to that is looking at more demographics of the district, some areas of the district where there are large concentrations, they have individual Spanish speakers, so they have a wider, wider cultural consulting, and the ability to sit with parents, students, and be able to speak in the court, which really lowers the effective filtering, helps them to really draw out what their thoughts are, who they're asking for in this district. So that is something that I am doing in addition to the English, that we will be conducting. The survey is also fairly well-known, so that's something that is really important in this district, because I have a venture at the state, really inclusive.
It's important, it is, like an outreach to that group, which unfortunately is just, there's barriers because of the language issue, so it is a concern for us, reaching them. So thank you for addressing that.
And then just to confirm the addition, but so for additional languages outside of English and Spanish, that's an important 415 extra on the survey, because we do have, you know, a lot of different languages, whether that must be Asian countries, European, so that's something we want to be mindful of, too.
Yeah, and it's a professional translation, if it's not.
Yeah.
We did several different translations, you know, exterminals, but I might, we did with participants, those languages, but we did have several translated.
Thank you. If you're done? She looked all right. Well, thank you so much for sharing your processes, your experience, and just kind of overall, like what sets your firm apart from other search firms?
Well, you're looking at three very experienced retirees, so we were now retired, very familiar with how high schools operate today. Carmen just retired, not even a year ago, and I was in 214 just a month and a half ago, and Jane. So it's not like we're not close to the professionals, so that's the first thing. The other one is, this would be our only search, we would not be doing another search, so we would have our full time attention. We also have a specific board portal that you can access 24/7, so you'll see all the information we are collecting, our notes, you'll see the candidate's resume, their letter of interest and things like that, which I think you know.
Yes, well, one of the things that I, we've done over 1,600 searches in 35 years, last year, 21, 22, you know, 90 searches, and that is way above any national firm or any local firm, we get 77% of late school searches, we can get the large city schools as well as school those grades that are under 500 students in rural areas, you know, from San Francisco, to Los Angeles, I mean, we've always been a national firm for 35 years, and I mean, we wouldn't be able to continue to attract such quality people like Carmen, who has just recently joined HYA, recruited by HYA, that that's the type of talent that HYA looks for in their associates.
What I would add to that is, with HYA having 35 years in the field of searches, I was a candidate, when I was a superintendent, and I participated as a candidate with HYA and Karen.
Jane?
But bringing that perspective as well, that tried and true, all experience with the candidates experiencing, I think says a lot also to our uniqueness in really vetting candidates, to really unique in the district, which is most important for you.
You know, it's really important to communicate to the candidates, too, you're, it's bad news or good news. One of the things that I respected in those one through process with HYA is I knew exactly where I stood, and that wasn't always the case, there were other times when I would do it with other firms, and I would never hear until I read it in the paper that I would get the job. And so we pride ourselves in really being honest with candidates, we have the floor all the way down there, and we really show respect.
We work with and for the board, although obviously with HYA, we want to make sure that our clients are very happy, because if you are, that's our success, that's essential for searchers. But also, HYA, just like all the other, like, search firms, they have a website, but ours is the one that is, look at the most, we get 25,000 bits a month, because people that are interested in a new job, they know, they'll see what HYA has to offer, but also all the other competitors. So we put our competitors' information on our site also, and it makes it just easy for everybody just to go to one, one place. I think that's, and also we've done analytics, and we found out that more people apply on. I think that's, and also we've done analytics, and we found out that more people apply on the HYA site through the HYA process than our competitors. So that's something else. We have a back office and Ed, he just loves statistics and, thank you, Gordon, because I, you guys have a special, but you don't have interest to love that. Ed, that also sets us up.
Yeah, the back office is important because there's somebody there, different shop or office from eight to five, maybe from Friday, but we also have offices on both folks, individuals working there. So the hours would be long with the time change that we have. So there's a great deal of coverage if the board could schedule some. Of course, you know, as associates, we are very proud to refer to calls and emails and that sort of, but just, you know, be sure that there will always be some, and we try to do that.
We give the board training to do if you don't. We help you finalize the questions that you wish to ask. We make things as easy as possible for you. All you have to do is just concentrate on the interview. You do all the other work behind the scenes. You don't need to deal with any, you can just concentrate on the candidates and try to get this as seamless as possible. It'll probably be Jay and she will contact. We'll always have, like, usually the board president or board vice president constantly communication, and we share that out with the other board members. That's very important because we need to know exactly what is the board thinking, what are their concerns, how can we make things better. So we're with you every step of the way until the actual final election.
And after?
And after that, yes, right. We provide counseling for the new superintendent, strategic planning, if you're interested in that. Our focus right now is just to find the next one.
Does anyone have follow-up?
Do you guys handle, like, a multitask, like, beside, let's say, you know, like, search for, let's say, us, or a couple from here and maybe a couple from out of state, too? Do you handle our multi-purpose level or kind of one individual per se or how's that work?
Are you asking, are we just, the three of us just be focused?
I'm sure you have some more staff handles, more tasks, right? More job opportunities, correct?
Oh, yes. Overall, the people that, and then, you know, the back office, they get the information, like Jenny, they send to our office, you know, we're interested in RFP, and then they reach out to all the associates for us.
So do you feel more compared to five, 10 years ago, or 20, even 20 years ago, per se, hiring, looking for all these superintendents or principals, all that leadership? Do you guys, are we still more busier than ever or what's the trend or what's the changes do you guys feel?
Well, we are probably busier than ever a little bit back in the time of the pandemic. Here, as you know, very divisive communities, very, it was hard. I was living around in Deerfield at that time. Harmon was the state superintendent, Ken was the, we lived in the role, and a lot of superintendents, that I just can't do this anymore. And they might have been rock stars before this all happened, and the community loved them, but not all of a sudden, too. So they were looking for a new start. So we think a lot of those members are attributed to the pandemic and the situation that occurred then. There's also a difference in the pool of candidates. Way back then, since I turned 30 years ago, when I actually did for a superintendent position, it was not unusual to have 80 candidates. It was hard to get a job out of a superintendent department because there were so many candidates. It's not that way. The pool is more shallow, but also because there are so many vacancies across the country and so many opportunities. And we're just not seeing quite as many people desiring it. After the last few years, the cultural wars have created a lot of stress and tension. And there's some volatility out there in the environment. People are a little done shy if they don't have this done for them. Please jump in.
Very much so. It's just like the teaching profession, the numbers of persons that are looking to be a teacher now is much lower than ever before. And also in terms of superintendents, we've done some very high-profile scholarships. And maybe we had 17 people, 17, where it's normally.
On seven?
Seventeen, uh, normally we would have four. But again, we remind the board, don't do one. Okay? I would also say probably those that are interested in really becoming a superintendent, they probably have a better pedigree now than they did in the past. We had people in the past who applied, let's just say they were an elementary principal, and now they want to be a high school superintendent. Two different things. And they just wanted to see what it was like. Well, we don't do that. That's just a waste of our time. So again, we want to make sure, I'm assuming that you would like to see somebody that has some type of high school experience, not just elementary experience, and so we would focus in on that, or just like a unit district, or a district also. Again, we would talk through that in the process. And lastly, this is the team that you would be hiring. And I, you know, there's nobody else. You're looking at the three people that would be.
I have one question, and this is, Dr. Westerholm, you're unique in the people that we've met today, because you are the only person who sat before us, and will sit before us, who is, was the superintendent of a partner district of ours. Can you speak a little bit to whether that might have an impact on your counseling of us or anything? You have a history that you know of our district, that's unique in all the people we spoke with.
I think it's an asset. To be able to come in and already have a good understanding of the differences in your high schools, the population in the communities that are served High 207, I think that's an advantage. I was thinking about this question, and I really appreciate you asking that, because I, I believe I even asked both of you when we were doing a preparation call, do you think that's a disadvantage for the board, see that it's a disadvantage or an advantage? And we really couldn't come up with a reason that it was a disadvantage. I just think having that background knowledge, I don't have to go out and learn that. I can focus on the next level. You know, it just is really useful. I know where things are, I know where the schools are, I know some of the challenges, you know, and how we, the difference that we were.
I think that's kind of what I'm getting at, is, you know, we haven't gone through the analysis, but it may very well be that we, you know, want to take the district, you know, and the community in a different direction than maybe what you're used to or even were used to. So I'm just trying to get at that a little bit.
Yeah, and I, you know, honestly, that's what we always hope for, is regardless of the things that are going along in your district that you're so proud of, the next leader should take it to the next level. And we're going to order about what that next level is, listening to you, listening to stakeholders, and that's what we'll focus on. You know, I've had a lot of different experiences since I was 62. You know, being a superintendent, you know, superintendent in Highland Color, in Deerfield, you know, I really learned some different things because of the very different communities since 62. And so I had to stretch my learning a lot, and I learned a lot from the communities and the board members, and I worked with them. And I really felt that in me as a superintendent. Likewise, I think that it's opened my eyes to opportunities and challenges the districts would face that might be different than they were at that time, and what was going on.
Thank you. Thank you for responding. Do you have anything you want to add to that?
The neighbors. Hello, Mount Prospect.
Okay.
I read the journal.
Wow. Maybe don't admit that. No, just kidding.
We had some trouble.
Yeah. Does anyone have anything else?
I have one quick question. In terms of the candidates you've recruited and placed in other school districts, what would you say your success rate is for those that at least stay on to be offered a second contract?
94% over 10 years.
But the persons that we've placed, they're still there. So we're, we're very hot as we find our people. We're not looking for jobs. You know, if you are. So people that we've slated and placed, there's still those jobs.
Well, and I would say, too, you're in advantage of consistency. I think you've been on the boards like 2012. That's a long time. And, you know, that is really an asset, because the first thing candidates are going to want, and I tell spot the board, is the board, you know, does they have consistency with leadership? Are they working together well? And this board has good reputation. And that's the big advantage. The district has good reputation, too. Those are things that will attract candidates to this district.
Mr. Eric, it was hard to press.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time, your work, your answers. We appreciate it. We, just so you know, we do want to make a decision quickly, so you should hear something one way or another in the next day or so. Okay? If we have any other follow-up questions, we'll reach out. Yeah, that's it? No one has anything else?
We're most appreciative of the opportunity. We can, you know, you will all do a really good job, whichever role you choose to afford, it would be honored to serve.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Carlo, are you going into recess again?
We'll take a 500 recess.
Now we are.
We are now back in open session. Welcome. Are you Norm?
What's that?
I'm sorry, are you Norm?
No, I'm Vance Paulson.
Vance, oh, good. Okay.
McPherson and Jacobs.
Okay. Wanted to make sure, I wasn't sure which, we received correspondence from.
Yes, yes. He is the CEO. And I just sent, because I told this to be more of an interview than a presentation.
Yes.
I just emailed you a PowerPoint that I would have used if you were going to press it.
Okay.
Do what you want with it.
Okay. Thank you very much. And you're free to hand that out if you like.
Okay.
Is that?
This is a, this is a PowerPoint, this is a packet of other information.
You're from state, or did you fly out from Nebraska?
No, no. No, he's from Wisconsin.
I am from Wisconsin. About an hour and 20 minutes ride.
Okay. And we apologize, we're just a little bit behind.
That's okay.
So I hope that's not messing you up.
Can I help you with those?
Almost have.
Okay, so we, here we have. Here's Terry Collins right over here. I'll hand these off for you.
Yes, thank you. One of those is.
Can we, can, okay, so Vance, you're Vance.
Do you need yours, Vance?
I do.
There you go. Yeah, okay, what was the last one?
Delvin.
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 Delvin. Well, we're glad you're here, because you'd be, be working with us directly.
Yes. That's, yes, so I would be the consultant along with Kristen McGee, who's a director who is just retired, is a director of human resources.
Okay.
With searches within the past.
Okay.
She's fantastic.
So welcome. Thank you for being here. Let me tell you a little bit about the process, just so that you know, and then, and then we can move forward. First of all, thank you. Your proposal, very thorough, really, you know, impressive. Part of the reason that we didn't want, like, a presentation or a PowerPoint, is we wanted to get to know the individual or individuals who'd be working with us, so we felt an interview was a better way to go. And we also wanted to, each of us is going to ask a question that digs a little bit more into things that matter to us and that we might want to learn a little bit more about. Okay? So that's how we're going to do it. We're each going to ask a question, and then, at the end, you know, we may have some follow-up. You may also want to say a few things. So you're our last interview, so we have a little more flexibility. But why don't we start by you just introducing yourself and telling us a little bit about McPherson?
So first of all, in the package is the proposal and my business card. Give you my cellphone number I can give to somebody, because it's not, that's corporate.
Okay.
I communicate a lot, I'm doing searches, a lot of communication that takes my equivalent of money. What card is? Yes, I'm Lance Paulson, and I am a professor of education at Carfish College, which is in Kenosha, but before that I was a superintendent of schools for 10 years, and before that a high school principal for many years, and assistant principal, and a district government teacher. Then I was actually interim when I retired. I haven't been rated in retirement, because I just, I was interim superintendent in a district where I'm a principal in a year or two. So this, I love doing these searches. I connected with McPherson when I applied for a job one time. I was impressed with their process, and I said, I'm retired, so they, would you need a person to be a search consultant? They said, yes, we'd love to have this. This is five searches. I am not a ten-search type of guy. I have one or two, I did three last year, but they were all different times. I just want to give, not give a rich bean a search, it's nice to have extra money. I really love doing this, and I think it's a real important, important job. So that's why, that's why I do it. And, but I just do one or two, you know, I don't want to do a, Kristen's my partner, she's taken the last, last two searches I've had, and now she's fantastic. So she, I guess her background is, you'll have us from, if you choose us, you'll have us from start to finish. We'll be able to, anybody else? Would you be willing with us? Yes, she retired as a director of human resources, just retired. She's working part-time, her full disclosure now, but that's it. Yeah, so a long career in education. I still love being around kids, still love being around education, I love doing these searches.
Okay. Why McPherson?
Okay, well, McPherson, I'll tell you, the reality of it is, is these, you've just been through four presentations, a lot of it's errors, they mistake all the important things. But I will tell you that it's the connection you have with people. People who work with myself and Kristen really felt good about these, good things to say. Hopefully you'll recall them and talk to them. So it's really, that's what you're really, I believe, I hope it works as a, as a, you really want, you have a good connection with the people who are doing this work for you. So that's what I would say. Yes, we have a lot of experience, we're genuine people who care about the districts. And McPherson, the firm of McPherson's been around for over 30 years. The only last has a firm, national firm like that, is if you have a successful service. Because if you Google McPherson Jacobs, and you're seeing things like, you know, this superintendent didn't work out, or this, and we don't, we don't last. We last by doing good searches. And that's why McPherson Jacobs, I think it's a very incredible, it's a very, you know, you Google for an extensive training process, where we have hired as a consultant, and we have good searches, and we have a lot of great searches, and that's the history of success.
Okay, as a follow-up, I'll ask the first question. Kind of as a follow-up to that, because you are, when I look through this, you have, you have a lot of consultants all over the country. Here in this area, not as many. Okay? And so can you talk a little bit about specific expertise that you might have, maybe not right in Illinois, but with districts of our size and our demographics?
Well, okay, so the Conawalk School District, which I think you're about, just under Steph Thomas District, is that right?
Well, yeah, we're, what are we at? 50, 500?
Okay, so that's.
6,000.
6,000. I was looking at some, yeah, so we've done larger districts, you know, Conawalk School District, High Performance School District, and so we're in Milwaukee as a search that I did last year. So we have experience in doing this type of searches. The elephant in the room is, why would we hire a person from Wisconsin and not Illinois? I get that, I understand it. I think a lot about that. Well, a couple things. First of all, all the other firms, you probably, you know, get our Illinois, they have a kind of a process, they outlearn each other, they're, they do these searches, and fresh eyes, fresh eyes. And the other thing is, we're hungry. We're hungry to get, we want it to a great searcher, because we would like to get more to Illinois, I mean, do searches in Illinois. So that's really an extra special to meet the needs of the school districts. Okay? Closer to, in terms of expertise, yes, we do searches in this, we do small searches, larger district searches.
Let me just, our district is sort of a, we have three high schools. The one you're in here is a sort of a more uniform demographics. We have two other schools with a much more diversity, low income. So that makes a weird, not weird, but a kind of ch-. So, that makes a weird, not weird, but a kind of challenging situation for any superintendent and staff, because you've got different pressures, you know.
Absolutely.
So, I guess one thing we want to know is, have you had experience with that kind of district where you've had to recruit? Because we do think it's kind of an important factor.
To recruit students and recruit staff?
To recruit, to recruit the superintendent for a district like that.
Right. And I have a lot of experience in union high school districts. My last one was an interim superintendent and principal there, for that as a cane superintendent in suburban Milwaukee District. So, I have experience with that. But yes, I think that people are going to be attracted to this position because first we have 15 years superintendent, a longstanding superintendent, means it's a good situation with a person that works in, like, if you're safe, if you change of leadership quite a bit in the school districts, and the person's going to stay there. And I've always liked, I've always welcomed diversity as a superintendent. I like the diverse school districts. I think people, you know, it takes a special person, but he wants to do that. But that's, that's part of coming here and being a superintendent, understanding that there are three new high schools that are different in terms of the demographics, in terms of their needs. And that's, I think most people, your profile, most people are going to be, you know, very good candidates, great candidates. So, I would, I think you'll, I think you'll be able to attract group people for this position.
Okay. Thank you. Terry?
Oh, okay. So, I have a question on kind of how do you do so? So, how do you assess and vet candidates to determine their suitability for our district?
Okay, well, first of all, we'll meet with the board and develop a profile on what characteristics you want as a superintendent. We'll also be involved as stakeholders, to meet with community, with staff, even students if you want. I've always loved that, meeting students, about what they want in the next superintendent. When we start to, when we start to select candidates, we are, we are, that's one of the things we really, we don't just call them the references, they have other references. They write, they sign, we can go back and check, which we can do those type of things. So, really, that's a real important part, a real important part of the process, because we don't want anybody coming here that we didn't know things from. So, as well as every Google search, every reference, everything we can do, we're talking sometimes to nine, 10 people before you bring a candidate, to recommend a candidate. So, that's very important. And as I said, you don't last as a firm for bringing in candidates that are not ready.
Okay. Follow-up, anything? I guess, so you develop a profile first and then, and then do the search against it?
Well, okay, you would develop a profile of what you wanted a candidate. And the most important part of that is the board. We meet with the board, we talk about, this is the board, which is important, hiring the superintendent is the board's responsibility, as you know, the only person who directly hires.
Hired.
So, that's very important. We meet with the board, we actually get samples of qualities that the board's wanted and determined. And then, that's involved in the recruitment process. Everything revolves around that, even, even to the point where we do a, see a candidate that has promised, we have an interview that's about 15, 20 minutes on, we ask them some specific questions about the district. If diversity was an issue, and most of us on staff, we have, understand working in diverse communities, that might be a question. So, you can see that video when you're doing the actual, literally, down with the candidates. So, yeah, you develop a profile. You develop a profile. You want, you want, you want to be a fit for this school district. There's a great candidate, but they're, sometimes they're not a great fit for that particular school district. And you make this of this school district, it's across, and that, and that process.
And the stakeholder information, if you do surveys or whatever, that feeds into that profile?
That feeds into that profile.
So, I just want to make sure I understand that that, you're not just talking to the board.
It does indeed. And that, that's, it's twofold. First of all, it gives the board some information, people about their perceptions of things. And sometimes, boards learn a lot. You know, the most interesting thing is when kids are talking about, they see a superintendent. I was not that interested in reports to hear, and I always know, boards know, you should continue to do this, we can hear, we can, well, that person, your students, everyone's from home. So, yes, the stakeholder groups gives valuable feedback and asks for the positive things of the district, or the community, what are some positive things of the district, what are some areas of the area, what are some characteristics you would see next? And it's qualitative data, we'll just take everything, it's anonymous, we do these different groups, we don't write their name down, what they say, then we combine that and make clues for each candidate. And that part, I can show you, I have examples. So, examples of ones, Oconomowoc was the largest of Columbus and Willmaw, for some stakeholder groups. Now, some boards, and I recommend they do, but that's a board position, post this right on the website. So, it's very transparent, people can see. You know, if you're pretty good with the board, sometimes you, you know, see that right on there. So, I think it helps with the transparency, the school district can feel like, hey, the board is really, you know, good, the bad, and the ugly about what they're saying. So, that's part of the process. That's very cumbersome, but understand that's, that's all the responses that someone says. The scarring is really the key theme, is that if one person says something that doesn't, unless it's really a theme, it's not as significant, because you say, the superintendent's visible or something, that's, that becomes a theme. So, yes, and then therefore, people cannot make the table, because there's a survey, that's an anonymous survey, that they can use that data to, so that's helping inform the board on what the different stakeholders are looking for. And what they feel is positive about the district and such. And it's a recruiting, people who hit, who hit the profile. And the best superintendents have jobs right now. These are not, you know, it's a, it's a knock, it's a tap on the shoulder. You should really look at this, the township, the school district, because it's really good things on there. That's, that's what it is. We're going to advertise, yes, but it's all, more importantly, it's contacting people , it's in emails. So, you, you, you're going to be a good person for this position. Based on the, based on what the board is looking for in a candidate, you say, some boards would say, well, something really good, fiscal sense, really good, school business in a sense, and you have something that's part of the whole.
Okay. I think that needs some needs.
Yeah, thanks. So, once, once you've kind of got that profile developed, then what methods do you use to kind of assess things like leadership abilities, as well as kind of cultural fit for a particular?
So, once you've established the profile, everything we do after that is kind of, for instance, we take references, last we said, we said the questions about these type of things. Is this person a good fit in terms of business, what experience you have in your business world? So, the interview questions that we establish. So, there's so much.
There's no problem.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Don't worry about it.
I thought you were having a good time.
Because they never call you when you want them to call you. So, so the interview, as we meet, as we start to develop, you know, materials, materials would say, these are, these are the characteristics that the board has established as priorities. The interview questions that we establish, we're really, we want to walk the talk. We really establish these as your priorities in terms of characteristics you want in the next superintendent. We want to make sure you're recruiting, you're assessing those things through reference checks, through interview questions. Some, you know, this is a, it's a high-profile district, maybe, maybe when you bring finalists back, you want to do a, let them do a presentation to stakeholder group. And there, you're giving them the specific topics that are related to the characteristics. So, those are ways, you're assessing those, those qualities in a few different ways.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Jin?
Yes. Regarding candidates like background check, reference check, and so on. So, when you guys conduct these reference checks per se, how do you guys ensure a comprehensive background assessment?
So, we do a very thorough background check, and not, and not just ask, not just type of references, but we'll say, is there someone else we can talk to who might have a different, sometimes a different opinion of this candidate? Or is there someone else who might have a different opinion? The other thing is, when you get to the finalists, our firm has attorneys that really do the, look at the criminal, criminal background check, the financial background, and those type of things. That's part of the process. We're not going to recommend anybody to do that has a criminal background, financial situation. And we ask them, the other thing is, during the, obviously, in the application, we do the interview question, we ask, is there anything that came, because we're going to find out things about you, if there's something you want to tell us, have you been done, you have you been terminated? Has it been some type of discipline that's happened to you? You know, and every situation happens like that, it's not necessarily, you need to be aware of it, but maybe some things that happened that you were not, that happened as a superintendent. This is a tough, this is a tough job. Certainly, you know, this is a tough job. It's very difficult, it's more global than it's ever been. It's, you know, people are more critical for education in general, and boards. So, sometimes, things happen to a candidate that are just, it's not fair, but it happened, but you want to know about that. You want a person to be can, have candor, be genuine. So, we'll explain that part of the story. So, yeah, a thorough reference check is before we bring them to you, and then, it's down to the finalists, because it starts, it starts with a cost, and we start to do criminal backgrounds and the financial things, but get to the finalists, and the finalists are some of the people really strong, and these people.
What about their social media presence, or their online footprint?
Yes, that's, that's, we will, we will Google everything, we'll use anything we possibly can to, to find some things that might be online. And sometimes, it happens, you know? Because if we're really happy, people may come with the names in the paper as a finalist, you know, every one of your community people are doing that, too.
Is this dude from Nebraska?
He's in Wisconsin.
We'll do it, yeah, I'm in Wisconsin. We'll do it, you know, we'll do it. And a few different people, a couple of people would be doing it, looking in different, different parts of, you know, social media. So, yes.
Related to confidentiality, what measures do you guys take to protect the, the identities of the candidates who wish to remain anonymous until a later stage of the, the search per se?
See, that, in that situation, that's very important. Until their finalists, not releasing their, but you have to, I mean, eventually, you have to. And the other thing is, you want to, or eventually, because, I'll send the names there, and someone says, hey, I know so-and-so who works there. Not something ridiculous like us, they just want to like the candidate. You do want to hear those things, you know, upfront, superintendents, and finalists, and people like, you know. Now, you have to establish as board, how you want to do it. If you say, hey, listen, you know, everything through our consulting, and board, just one person is the key, you know, the district is the key person. And you discover.
And also, I'm looking at, you know, your company's profile, you are definitely a nationwide search.
It's a national search.
You are all over from A to Z, pretty much, and so on.
Absolutely.
Just quickly, because as our, you know, the president, Carla, was just referencing it too, this is Midwest, this is kind of somewhere very unique, and even though you're driving from, all the way from Wisconsin, but I see some Illinois consultant, yeah, about two persons, Dr. John, Dr. Roy, and so on. Normally, you know, doing as a team, you know, invite him to come together and learn more about.
We'll, we'll contact those people, we'll contact a lot of consultants. But there, once it happens, there's a, there's an email that goes out to all the consultants. I mean, over, you know, over 100 consultants, like 130 consultants saying, you know, they're doing this search, do you know anybody? And then, we get far, but then I'll personally contact those.
Oh, so these people are not a part of your actual team per se?
Our team is two people. Two people that will do, now, now the corporate will do, they'll help us with advertising, they'll help us with things, when we start establishing a contract, and all those type of things. But for the actual search, the main people are me and Kristen.
So, you're New York?
Yeah.
No one, but no one from Illinois per se?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I follow up?
Sure.
What is your, what is your impression, because you are national, okay? You really have, I think that's a strength, that you have access to a really broad group of applicants because of the national presence. But what's your experience with people wanting to come to the Midwest? I mean, even, even Wisconsin from these other areas?
Well, one of the things is, obviously, sadly attracts, you know, in Illinois, it has not a great retirement system. Wisconsin has a better retirement system than Illinois. However, Illinois tends to have higher salaries.
Sales.
So, so it might attract some people because of the high salary. But the retirement pension is not what it was in Illinois 20, 20 years ago. I just want to be honest about that. It's not any ancient retirement thing, or something. So, but I think you will, but, you know, these, these districts, fairly close to Chicago, you'll get a lot of, you'll be a lot of people interested in.
From nationally, you're saying?
Yes, professionally, yes, from all around. You will get, you'll have more than just people from Illinois applying for this position. Now, you know, and the advantages is, I can see what else they apply. They apply for every district, you know? They just seem desperate, doesn't seem to be as genuinely interested. You can find that out, how they apply for every, you know, to put that, some people in Wisconsin, they, they, same people apply for every job they have. They were significantly different demographics and significantly sizes, and they just started wanting, why is this? Why is this person, this person trying, their position's so bad? But you will have, you will, you will have people applying naturally for this job. You're getting a good start. I mean, it's, you know, it's a year ahead, a year, next, by next year this time, this person will be starting. But you're good start, something a lot started, or, 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 that's great. So, I think you attract good candidates for this position.
Hi, Jex. Ed's time. Ed, you're up.
In regards to community engagement, what strategies will you be employing together, input from various stakeholders in terms of their expectations and priorities for the superintendent?
Well, part of the whole process is another, it's, it's, we're showing the community that we're very transparent. Second of all, is to inform them, you know, so the board has hired McPherson Jacobs, and I'm determined to select a candidate, and then have a process with the board. And then, there's, then we meet with these different groups. You, you, with the board. There's one day or two days, sometimes three days, where you're meeting with, you know, business people, you meet clergy sometimes, clergy people, staff, a couple different times, staff, one in each building, student body, you meet all those groups, and asking the same questions. You can see the report that comes from that.
It's, it's.
And that's how, that's how we get feedback, in addition to a survey that's people who fill out. You're arching all that data and looking at, what are the, what are the things that are stakeholders are telling us about, about the needs of the superintendent, about the positive things. And it's a valuable tool for you as a board, not just for selecting superintendents, just getting all that data, qualitative responses.
And I think echoing what Carla had asked you earlier, even if we're focusing just on a survey, the results of the surveys you're going to get from, it's like the student body or the parent body of this school as opposed to Midwest and the A's, you're going to get probably vastly different answers. How are you going to incorporate that into finding as a superintendent that can successfully address all those different issues throughout the vast district?
Well, see, that, that's a situation we might want to do with three separate schools. Of course, we can see it, yeah. And second of all, that's part of the, that's part of getting to know the candidate. How would you make sure that you're visible in all three of our high schools, that you're meeting the needs of all three high schools, and that you're respected and credible with the staff and the community of each of those districts? That's part of the, you're getting to know them as a board, and questions, and process, That's part of the, you're getting to know them as a board, and questions and process. And how do all stakeholders act when you're a superintendent? That's, that's, that's really important. And I'm hearing from you as a, yeah, that, we have three different, we have three separate high schools, which is not that, I mean, it's often in a larger union high school district where there's, even if there's two high schools in the district, I mean, it's a change where they're significantly different buildings, different culture, different everything, you know? So I think that's, that's important, that's part of your process to make sure the data, a plan or some thoughts about, how do you meet the needs of all three?
Well, and I'd assume you'd be looking for people who have that kind of background.
Yes, I think, yes, because it has to be someone who's comfortable. First of all, it's a hard, in terms of the curriculum, in terms of finance, it's high school. It's not elementary. I was a high school guy for most of my career, finally, I was a K-12 superintendent. I loved it, I was looking elementary, so I went, why did I, I was, I had a high school earlier, but I was married to a, 35 years married to an elementary school teacher, so I kind of knew. But yes, so you would want someone who understands that union high school district is different. And if you want to talk to them, okay, you're a separate school district, separate board, but how do you connect with the K-8 figures? It's still important, it's still important, part, you're still, you know, part of that whole community. So those are things that you would, and I think emerge as you talk to stakeholders, emerge as you talk to people. You may want to do a focus group. I, when I, at Willmont, I did the search and I'd also been, was also certainly his interest superintendent. We specifically met with the K-8 superintendents and board presidents because we wanted to know if this was really a team, this was really a, they all feed to the same, so I think you want to, that's, that's unique to this district. If someone understands, if this is a district that knows that it's separate, there's a really need to make a difference in terms of curriculum and such.
Okay, good, Ed, okay. Sheila?
Yeah. Um, you know, just, just a little, a little bit more on like stakeholders. So we've already talked about diversity, obviously lots of different language, lots of different cultures. So can you speak a little bit to like community engagement to make sure that we're reaching the populations that we want to reach, like whether language, whether via those focus groups, what, what you've done in the past?
Well, I can tell you as a principal for a large, a large, actually, rural population, we made sure that we, you know, we didn't assume that communication was always going to be needed to really reach out, you know? And sometimes we changed the venue, it wasn't important, it wasn't always in the school. It was someplace else where people could go for, for, that's an important, that's an important process. And we're, we're a lot of the principals, how can we connect with families, color, to have this, they're not about race and ethnicity and language and socioeconomic, and how are we reaching out to all the stakeholders? Because you don't want just thoughts and opinions of people who are wealthy, white people. And, you know, you want to really be diverse, lots of, you know, things.
And so I know you spoke a little bit to this earlier, but just, you know, overall, like what sets your search firm apart from other search firms?
Well, I think there's a lot of people who do search, there's not many a lot of others that are going to search. But I, I, I always get the feeling that for more like, although we're a big national search firm, you're going to work lots. You're going to, it's going to feel like this isn't a, I'm going to have to call it Nebraska, I'm calling Vance. I'm texting Vance right now and he's calling me. So I think that's the, I think it's the team that you have. I think we do a good job with the stakeholder group that working with the board. I think Krista has such great human resources skills that she really helps in that process. A heck of a lot in understanding how it really gets input and feedback and things like that. I think she's really an asset. So I think those are, I think we're, we're still in the game. She just retired and I'm relatively recent. Some of the consultants you have have been out of the game for 10, 12 years or, you're not sure that the person you met with here is going to be the person that's doing the search, and they're doing 10 searches. And this is the only, I'm telling you, this is the search, the way we searched out, we did one, we did one earlier this year, but I want to take that one, so I want to connect you with this board and do, reach out to this board, and then quite honestly be able to, I love her, Illinois.
All right, that finishes our questions. George, did you want to?
What's the general timeframe to start to follow the superintendent?
Well, I, I think you'd want to, probably October or so, you're going to want to start really focusing on, you want to select a search firm as soon as possible to start to, you know, because you're selecting, us, we're starting working right away. If you know somebody, you know, you know, but I, but I think probably, you know, you're posting this in maybe mid-October, and you want a person selected by April at the latest. Because I think you really start to lose some candidates and, you know, the, 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 like, real superintendents, they start, you know, they're starting their year out, they're, they're excited about their school year, and then it's September, and they're like, hey, maybe it's time for a change. Or, hey, if there's, if there's a Jacobson, contact me and take a look at, you know, so that happens. But there's a cycle. It's usually not September because, you know, I mean, that they're, they're applying for positions right now. They are, remember, they are, and they want to make sure that you're getting, not closing up before winter break. Because a lot of superintendents are applying during that time. They finally have some time off to do that, whatever, and they want to search for, they wanted to close. And I said, no, no, that's when they're really, they're going to apply at that time. They have some time off, they'll be able to, I would say by April 1st, at least, you want a person identifying, contracting. And that means a lot of you are working in March, you're interviewing late February, March.
Does anyone have any other question?
Just one, how many searches have you done?
Five.
Five. Of those, what would you say the percentage rate would be in terms of the retention of those superintendents for at least two years?
Well, so last year I did three searches, this, actually, yeah, four searches, okay? So everyone is still in their position, but I have fairly new candidates. You want, yes, that's, that's another thing, obviously you want, you had a longstanding superintendent. You want another one. I have 15 years, it's unrealistic to think, but honestly, that 15 year, you can't, you can't think that this person's going to stay for 15 years. But you want him to stay for seven or so, or more, you could have wrote more, but so, you're lucky to have a superintendent for 15 years because that doesn't happen. But, but yes, that's, if you look at the data, there's some data that's shared in this proposal. If there's a Jacobson, that's another thing, is they have a history of places, superintendents that have lasted for, you know, five, four years. Half of them have lasted for five, four years. The other thing is we guarantee, providing you develop performance objectives for the superintendent. If it doesn't work out for any reason, in the first two years, we, we do the search, we register two weeks. That's, that's part of the contract, you look at the actual contract. It's provided that you've developed performance, and we help you through that, we help you through that developing performance objective, whether it happens, let me tell you the superintendent, you know, the board changes and all of a sudden the objectives change, you know, what the priorities were, so, but long as you've established performance objectives and have used that, that is part of the evaluation process for the superintendent, if it doesn't work out, we do the search. Because we don't want the school district, you know, feeling bad about our, our service. I, that's never happened with me, it's happened very rarely ever, but we do have that promise.
Okay, does anyone else have anything? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the, I think you, are you going to leave those?
I need those, yes.
Okay, you take those back, okay. Just so you know, we will want to make a decision pretty quickly, so you'll probably hear back from us in a day or so.
Great.
And thank you for coming out, we really appreciate it.
Sure, good luck, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We're going to continue if that's okay? Okay.
This is my, I'm going to give you my cell phone number too.
Oh, sure, I can write that down, go ahead.
Two six two, four nine seven.
Four nine seven?
Two six six one.
Two six six one, thank you.
Any other questions or something?
Thank you so much.
Because on the, on the, this is card that's, I don't know.
And I hope you find your phone. I think, we know it's in there, we know it's in there, we heard it. Take care, drive safely. Brett, are we, we have like a half hour before they would need to come in. So we're just going to go ahead. Okay, can I see the agenda?
We'll say half hour.
The band, the band, we might need to do a recess so the band kids could come in and grab their instruments. I forgot to ask you about public comment.
So we stay open session the whole time?
That's all right. We are, we are staying open session. I, I see no need, let me just go through the resume, or the agenda here. Other items informational?
None.
No, none.
And no closed?
No closed session, I do not see a need for closed session. Okay, so what, what I'd like to suggest at this point is that we just keep going. We'll sit quietly, everyone can work on their notes, et cetera, and then let's give that, just, you know, I'll check back with you in a couple of minutes, and then you probably turn in your rubric to Sheila and let her have a look at, you know, kind of totaling it up where we, where we are coming out on things. And, and then we'll go from there. Sure. Okay. Okay. Are we taping?
We're recording audio.
Well, she's got a recording going, so. Well, we have a recording, so.
Right, right, I'm going to try again, but yeah, go ahead, sorry.
So, does that sound good? You know, we'll just do that and then we'll have a discussion. Okay, we haven't said anything, so.
Okay, it's good now.
Okay, we haven't said anything, so. George, are you turning on it? You're working on it, okay. Now, take your time, you're not.
Is he relaxed?
He's not relaxed. Okay, yeah.
Kind of.
These are good chips.
They're still crunchy, so.
Yeah.
We need the mushroom.
Do you have your rubric?
Uh, yeah, but, uh, just like.
As a reminder, we are recording. Just so everybody knows.
Pardon me?
We are recording.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Jen, if you could turn your rubric for me? Did you, did you, were you, did you have time to fill it out?
Well, I, well, oh, I mean, definitely, yeah, but I, I, I know the winners, but I already downloaded the paper, so.
Just rank them.
Yeah, I did.
Okay, that's fine.
We're gonna, we're gonna talk still.
Got it. Okay.
Sorry. She's very scientific, Terry, so.
Let's pull out our, our indicators.
So, would you tell who the top two?
All right, so we have the top two, when it's actually a tie, is School Exec Connect and BWP and Associates.
Could you say that, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that totally.
It is School Exec Connect and BWP and Associates.
They're tied?
They are tied, yes.
The first two?
Yeah.
Can you do a?
The first two, so I, I will do a point, but not everybody did points, which, yeah.
Oh, okay, so they just ranked without points?
Yeah.
Okay, let's, um, I think what we should do is kind of talk through those two and talk about strengths. Let's start with talking about strengths.
Strengths?
Yeah, let's talk about strengths.
Of those two, huh?
Of those two.
Does anyone need their rubric back, though, to do that, or you have your notes?
I have my own, it's, uh, fresh, a fresh hour.
You're writing in. Terry, do you want yours? Yours back, this is, yeah.
Oh, sure. I think I picked theirs, though, if you need it.
No, I don't need it, but whichever one's, I don't know.
Okay, um, why don't we go around and, you know, kind of, if, if you had a number one, if you might want to talk about the reasons that you felt they were the best for you? Terry, do you want to start? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can start going.
Okay.
That's good.
Okay.
So, the top two in my book.
Let's start with your top one.
Number one. Okay, my top one, but my top two were very close.
Okay.
But, um, my top one was BWP. I felt, I guess I was judging, not just by their presentation, not by the written stuff, but by the verbal. I thought their process was well-defined. I thought they had, um, you know, a tremendous amount of previous searches. You know, there were a lot of previous searches that were immediately applicable to our area, you know, that, um, I thought they had references. The references meant a lot to me, because I knew those people who were doing the references, and I thought I, I, um, those carried weight with me, that those people thought that they were good. I also felt that, um, there was a, I, I felt like we would get what we, what they said we were gonna get. I mean, there was some, um, I'd say that was, that's really, yeah, for the others, but it just, I, I just felt that there was a connection with the people that were presenting it, and that if they said this is what we're gonna do, I thought that was another one, too, but, you know, that this is what we were, we were gonna get, what we paid for. I guess that's what, maybe the best way to say it.
Okay.
And I, oh, and I also felt that, um, well, no, I guess I said it. It felt like the process, the process piece, to me, was important, and I felt like it was, um, well explained.
Okay. Ed?
I actually had two that tied, um, so my top two would have been BWP and HYA, but I got a stronger feeling regarding HYA. I thought they, they kind of got out of the gate slow in terms of their interview. But then again, I didn't really feel like any of the candidates really answered that first question adequately. I don't think both they and the candidates need to understand, you know, in terms of the demographics of the school district, we have one school here in a very, relatively a fluid community, and then you have another high school which sits right next to a, of a home, a park, you know, and you have a completely different socioeconomic, racial, ethnic makeup, and sort of reconciling those differences between schools. So I didn't really feel like anybody answered the first question adequately.
If you don't mind, let's, let's focus on, since the top two were BWP and School Exec Connect, for you, it's focusing on BWP.
Correct.
Okay.
I, I mean, I, School Exec was only two points below BWP, so I thought, I felt they were strong.
No, and I'm not stopping, I'm just saying, you were talking about Azure Young, and I thought, let's stay, let's stay with, um, what you felt about BWP.
You took HW for HYA?
HYA.
Well, no, we're, the top two were BWP and School Exec Connect, so those are the two that we are considering.
Okay. You know, as far as BWP goes, I like the fact that they're not gonna recruit as long as superintendents in the district. You know, so they checked, with the exception, really, of the first question, they checked all the boxes.
Okay. Let's come over here, let's come to you after. Jen, what about you? Who was your number one?
So mine was, uh, uh, well, before coming here, um, after thoroughly researching all the materials, and also based on hands-on personal experience, when I served as a assistant building university board of trustee, I was involved deeply on search form for the president, too. So through that experience and so on, um, you know, we did a candidate research, exactly same as what we did, um, and throughout that experience, um, I have previously selected the BWP first, and then School Exec, very close, too, well, they, they both are, but overall, uh, that, you know, the school district has selected, uh, the candidates of this search form is very good, excellent, uh, and overall, from there, three of them are very fine candidate, and from there, uh, the School Exec and BWP were very pleased with. Definitely, the experience I count that most, and they're very confident, uh, they know what they're doing, um, and that they're very proud of their businesses and so on. So, uh, I would like to give out full credit towards two, to them, and I am very confident the PWP and the School Exec, whoever comes in front, uh, they will do a very wonderful job, and at the same time, who understand, uh, our Midwest culture, that's something is very important, too, uh, because, you know, national form may be great and so on, but, um, we need someone who really understands the Midwest, Chicago land area, main township area, and main south, main east, main west, and the school, that cultural, uh, language, the diversity, uh, demographics, ethnics, city, and so on, and they cover it well, so I am confident whoever that we select from all those two, uh, I am very pleased with it, and I think they will do a nice job on it.
Thank you, yes.
Have you talked with, her name, with Denise, regarding their experience with BWP?
Well, a little bit, you know. I, I think, I think she actually, I, I actually think these were their two finalists, too.
Oh, yeah.
I do, I think they were, um, and, uh, she hasn't said too much, although, you know, Ben's going there was, you know, um, I think that happened pretty late in the, in the process, I'm not sure of the details of that, so I didn't ask for a definite, I just said, what was your experience like working with him? You know, all, you know, the, through the interview process, that's what I really asked her about, so I don't have any, you know, anything to shed on, on that. Dean?
Yeah, I, I thought both firms did a fine job, represented themselves well. I think for me, it's pretty close when it comes down to differentiating, I think the, the piece for me that was a bit of a differentiator, and I had chosen, uh, Exec Connect, was the rigor of how they assess evidence, um, and make it, get kind of the psychometric tool that they use, those types of things, I felt, um, you know, it, it's a little bit more than just an intuition or gut assessment, I kind of like the, to help that, that breaks the limits of the process, um, so I thought that was the difference. We got it on all other aspects, and they're fairly close, networks are both good, well-connected in the area, experience with such searches, so.
Okay, thank you.
So, so my, my top pick was School Exec Connect, and so for, for my reasons, I, I did appreciate that the forty percent were acting superintendents, I think there is a certain climate in our, in the area, whether it's our region, or whether it's just schools, schools and school districts, school boards in general, um, so, so I really did appreciate that, I think the, the different areas and districts they talked about did feel very comparative. I also, I, I agree with Dean on the fact that, that there are different tools that they talked about, they were able to speak about that very, very directly and succinctly, and I appreciated that, so I was able to kind of look at that as, like, there are multi-methods going into that decision, so, um, those are some of the, like, the main, well, the last main reason, which is really the most important, is, you know, I really just felt that genuine passion for centering the children and centering students there that didn't, you know, um, that I think is important value for all of us as well. BWP was not necessarily my second, um, choice, but it did, it came relatively close, and I think some, maybe some of my, some, some of the, the things that I identified there is, while I appreciate collaboration with the board, it felt like a lot was put on the board in terms of what, like, different steps through the process, and that was not necessarily appeared with, like, the other, uh, the other search firms, and so I was just kind of curious about, curious about that as, as they were talking about it, because, again, it was just like, so the board would do that, the board, and I just wonder, oh, again, it wasn't what was presented in the other ones.
I agree with, uh, quite a bit of what, um, Sheila has shared, uh, School Exec Connect did come out ahead, and BWP was second for me, but they came out pretty much ahead when I totaled my numbers, and I, I think a big, you know, I really spent time looking at the people that we'd be working with and how they communicated, and, um, I just feel they did a really good job, they were concise, um, they answered the question pretty quickly, and, and yet, at the same time, and Dr. Leek in particular, at the end, when she spoke about looking for people with the passion to put students first, I mean, I don't know what defines our district more than that, honestly, um, and, and that has been something that's been important to Ken, and it's what he's recruited, you know, our assistant superintendents and our principals, and so, to me, that I think is going to be an important factor, and that just really came across very, very genuinely when she was speaking. I really, um, found both of them to be, you know, great and communicative. I, I think that BWP, I know Susan pretty well, um, and I, they were all so impressive. I was a little, I have to say, I was a little confused about what her role was going to be, and it went long, so I really didn't feel like we could ask that question, um, but I was a little confused at, because I think her answers really were particularly excellent, um, but I just wasn't sure what her involvement fully would be, so, um, I also think School Exec Connect had a really strong high schoo-, high school background, which, um, some of them didn't have that, I mean, they had good superintendent backgrounds, but it wasn't always at the high school level, and I mean as individuals that serving in those capacities. Dean also mentioned that their answer on the, I think they, all of the, uh, I think there was struggle when we were saying, how would you identify leadership qualities? I mean, that is a really hard thing to do, and you're an HR person, so you would know that, and I do think that School Exec Connect got closest to answering, um, that as far as how they would, you know, honestly, I, I, there were times I wanted to say, how do you assess someone's courage to stand up when things are unpopular? You know, how would you assess that? I didn't, but I thought that was kind of an unfair question, but I mean, I think that's what they seemed to answer a little bit better, that kind of question, so that, that's where I come out on it. So.
I, I would say, too, that my, um, my numbers were so close between those two, I could go either way with that.
Okay.
I mean, I, um, for many reasons, but it's not like there's a clear definition between, um, one and two.
Right, right. George, do you want to weigh in here on, on your impressions and your thoughts?
Conversation is very important. I will tell you, we're hiring leaders, and it's important to, to, my question two, that's the question for me, if I would have won all the questions for the board, that's one leadership question that is gonna drive the decision-making, so, I, I, so I agree there, there's all, all, all the firms here today, um, what I did like about BWP is just, you know, you look at the school styles and, and, it is low-key, and people feel, okay, understand the community, not just district, or something, just. not just districts, or something, just around session, so that, with, um, the School Exec, that question number two, the high school experience, organized, um, their connections, and they all have connections, but, uh, so, those are kind of my thought processes.
Overall, the timeline, uh, they are in right fit, right? They understand the first one and second one, too, right? Based on our one-time timeline, and their respective timeline is all kind of that, so, studying.
Do we want to go around and, you know, maybe take another poll, one and two? Or are we, is anything that someone said, you know, indicated a change, do you want to go do that?
Well, just to speak to, to Jen's last comment, so I believe BWP estimated early December, I did note that, and I think School Exec talked about it Thanksgiving timeline.
Not unrealistic, but it felt like that could be a...
A possibility, I, yeah, I think, so around the same time, this year.
Actually, that one we saw depends on, uh, who they find the capability, the part that they outreach, because we never know, you know, it's a hard, it's an unfortunate thing that any of our candidates for search farm could able to find real good people, we will never know, so, uh, you know, we just have to hopefully...
Well, right, but I would, I would say that, you know, that November timeline, if, if they commit to that, or they can, they work hard on that, that is something that I think we want to try and do, because we need to fill the principal position as well, so I think that, that should be, we should take that into account.
There is, I would say, superintendents shortage, like, I remember this one, ten or twelve this year.
Yeah.
So for us being out front, um, November tenth, we're going to Canada, we were to negotiate the contract, so those are all factors, and well, December, that would be great, and then, amazing.
Sorry? No, it's okay, I'm just trying to see how we should proceed forward, we could do another straw poll, if you wanted to do that.
And, or, let's say, how many is preferred, the, the School Exec, I think you already have, how many?
It's, it's three and three.
Three and three.
Three and three, right?
It's tied.
So...
I like Terry could also, would be happy with School Exec, like I said, but they're only two points off, and, you know, what they didn't say today, you know, I thought was still reflected in the proposal.
Mm-hmm, right.
So, I'm comfortable with School Exec.
Okay.
Then, uh, we do, I, I, I work along with them, too, and put a weight on, yeah, School Exec, that's fine, too, you know, that's what we're saying.
But you're saying go for School Exec?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we are good, too. Unanimous, this is unanimous.
Are we, are we okay with that? I mean, they are both very good, and obviously I'll convey that, um, and I won't be, I will need to reach out and let them know, we need to see their contract first, and our, you know, just to make there's not, make sure there's not some problem. So I will not contact anyone else until after we've had a little chance to look that over our attorney as. But, um, if, if we're in agreement about that, um, and, and I really think that they both are very good, so, um, but, uh, if we're in agreement about that, I think we should just, we're in consensus, then that's what...
Our, my recommendation, we go with the School Exec Connect then as first choice, and then the base of the contract and whatever worked out, that's great, we pull, if not, uh, then we can go to the second choice, BWP.
Right, right, exactly, okay, all right, well, we have consensus then, um, and I will, uh, I will reach out to them, tomorrow morning and get some information, uh, get the contract they propose, and we'll go from there. Thank you very much for having the afternoon here, Jenny.
Thank you.
We just need a motion to adjourn, please.
I make the motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.